Well, hello everyone and good day, good morning. We're going to call, we're going to call this meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman for the city of Natchez to order. We're going to ask if you would to please stand. We are going to have our prayer and then follow that with our pledge. We are going to call on our own Sabrina Bartley today to lead us in a word of prayer before our board meeting.
Thank you. Today we pray a prayer of thanksgiving. Let us bow our heads. Oh God, we thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity to experience this wonderful thing that we call life. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together to do the business of the community. We pray that you would bless your, would give all of your blessings upon this nation, this state, this city, this community in which we live. We ask that you would bless our leadership all the way down and in particular, the leadership here that is under the sound of my voice in this room on this day. Bless us with those things that you say, that you know that we stand in need of. Let us be able to be beneficial to our communities, to our families, to the world at large. This is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Bartley. If you would join me in saluting our flag and saying together our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. We will ask our clerk to administer the roll call.
Yes, sir. Alderwoman Hall?
Here.
Alderman Fraser?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Diller?
Here.
Our president may have the phone.
Thank you so much. We are going to have a special moment. Give me a minute. We're going to ask Mr. Wazie Ely to please come forward. Mr. Wazie, I wanted to surprise you with something. Mr. Wazie, you are a treasure to Natchez. You are a friend to me, you're a friend to our community. And to understand your significance to the city and what you and your brother over the many years add to our city, one only needs to go to our court lawn and to see their court lawn to the Ely brothers. Mr. Wazie, you not only have served the city, you've served the country. You've been an employee of the city. You've been a volunteer in the city. And you have enlightened so many lives over these years with your music. And equal to your talent, your beautiful music is your amazing wit and charm and just the way you absolutely bring hope to people when sometimes they need hope the most. So we want to just present this to, Mr. Wazie Ely made, made history just recently in being celebrated on the cover of the Natchez magazine. And these are milestones that should be remembered and should be recognized. And you needed something to make sure that in years to come, people understand your significance and the significance of your talent and your contribution to Natchez.
Well, I'm surprised, but I do appreciate it.
He's more than that. He's more than that. Mr. Wazie, would you like to say a few words?
Well, kind of, no, kind of really. I guess all I can say that, every day I admit something to my commitment.
Thank you.
And I was automatic, I've been served and I took them to military, so that's a credit for me. I knew I did wrong, I'm gonna regret my call though, and I'm gonna turn around and say thank you all, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wazie, I'm going to ask if you would stay here a minute while we, we invite members of our Natchez Festival of Music who are in attendance to come up here. We have the chairwoman Diana Place and various members of the board here. And we'll just invite them to come up.
Up here?
Yeah.
Come up there?
And stand with us here. Um, while we, I'll, I'll move over a little bit. So we're about to take this discussion into another, come over my way, Mr. Wazie, we'll make room. We, we're going to take this discussion to now another level. The Festival of Music reached out to me and said, you know, what can we do to better serve Natchez? As you know, the festival celebrated their 30th year, their 30th anniversary, technically in 2020, but as we all know, we had to skip 2020. And so they had a very successful series of events and for 2021. But they stepped forward, we met with Diana Place, the chairwoman, and also with Mr. J. Dean, the director. And we established an idea that the Festival of Music would host a special concert in November at the Community Center. And it would be a unity concert for Natchez. So we immediately brought in Wazie and Wazie and his band are going to headline that event. Diana, would you like to say more about the event because we have other great talent and it is a diverse group?
Well, the event will be held on November 13th at the Natchez Community Center at 7:00 P.M. We will be featuring the four faces of American music, which will include Allen Shelby and his choir for gospel. We'll have the Adrian Michaels band for country. We'll have Trio 44 for jazz and concluding with Mr. Wazie Ely and his group for blues.
And I have a surprise announcement, guests who accepted my invitation to be a part of our Trio 44, which by the way is, you know, my jazz trio that we don't really talk about much. Mr. Tony Fields is going to be singing with me and with our trio. And we were excited. He and I actually sang a duet just last night together for our presentation for the graduates of Natchez Early College. And we talked last night and he's excited. Wazie, I said, Tony, I bet you know some good old jazz standards like some unforgettable and, and the likes of that. It's going to be an unforgettable night. And we wanted to make that announcement in public and we will have more information soon. But mark your calendars for Saturday. That will be again November 13th. And every city will be assisting in every way we can and making the community center available. And we appreciate the Festival of Music, Mr. Wazie, and all that y'all are doing to make this unity concert possible. Thank you.
This is on a Saturday night, so get your Angels on the Glove tickets for Friday or Sunday. Same weekend.
Mr. Wazie.
I would like to say, one more thing I would like to say. Here's the lady in this house, and I truly love you and respect her. I am so grateful, Ms. Bartley. Years ago, she's always said, Wazie, you don't know who you are.
Ms. Bartley, what you coming up?
I don't know. Mayor, I am, I don't have all my lipstick in makeup.
You look great, Ms. Bartley.
I want you to get here next to Mr. Wazie.
No, you're beautiful.
He's told me before how much he loved you.
Aww.
And, and I also, I want to use this opportunity to make an announcement also. It's going to be a surprise to her, but I'm going to ask her to stop taking pictures and come up here a minute. Ms. Frances Wallace, Ms. Frances, come up. Ms. Frances, you don't know this yet, but you're going to have to really help us with this concert. You know, after Juneteenth, and I haven't even had a chance to discuss this fully with the board because we've been moving so fast, but after our historic week of Juneteenth activities, the wonderful, lovely and talented Jessica Hawkins explained, she said, you know, my schedule is just so busy. But she's, you know, going to continue to help us on as needed basis and contracted basis for various special assignments. I said, my goodness, what are we going to do? We have so many things happening. And Ms. Frances Wallace stepped up to help me and just over the last few days, we made the decision to ask Ms. Frances to get full time in the community liaison position at the city of Natchez. And just last night, my goodness, she put together an amazing event where we honored the 30 graduates of our Natchez Early College, outstanding young people. And I don't know if it's made in the news yet, I haven't had time to post it on Facebook yet, but the Ms. Frances, we celebrated the young people, one of the top programs in the country, one of the very few programs we have in, say, Mississippi. These students are about to start school in the fall as juniors, some of them at the age of 18. And many of them on full scholarship to prestigious academic institutions. And so, Ms. Frances, you did a great job with that. And so get ready to help us with this. All right. And so with that, Mr. Purnell?
Mr. Mayor, for the purposes of the picture, can I get you guys to, maybe you and Mr. Ely standing in the center and then so we can get a balanced picture?
Here we go, Mr. Wazie, Ms. Bartley.
Oh, you guys stand there, I just want to get some, it's going to be, it's going to be a balanced picture.
Everyone just move ahead behind me.
You guys.
All right. Mr. Purnell is always saying care of us. And if the Alderman would like to be in the picture, we've got room on the front row. We've got room on the front row for the Alderman. Because the Alderman are very important to everything we do here in the city of Natchez and don't forget it. And so Alderman, do y'all want to?
No, we don't. We all do.
We all want to stay with them.
All right.
Can you get on that inside, Ms. Frances? Is it going to be a little bit more even? You guys can just come over to this, a little bit this way so I can see. There we go. Right here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Purnell. Mr. Wazie, the Festival of Music, thank you for reaching out and helping this.
Congratulations, Mr. Wazie. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Good job. Awesome.
We, we're going to have a lot of work to do to get, to get together. Without November 13th date, we'll be here before you know it. All right, we will now move into, and by the way, we don't have to take care of item under mayor's report. We just did that. We will now proceed to minutes, but before we do that, before we get too deep into the meeting, there is one other item on my report that I want to go ahead and get out of the way while we have everyone here. It's a very important announcement. I believe everyone knows that over the last couple of weeks, we've been working on a campaign that is launching right now. It is our vaccination campaign. And this is in response to the Delta variant. I want to make an appeal to everyone within the sound of my voice right now to realize that as said by our governor yesterday, this has now become a pandemic of the unvaccinated. According to the latest numbers from the state health department and a report given by Dr. Thomas Dobbs, 97% of the new cases of COVID, the Delta variant, are occurring in the unvaccinated population. 97% of these cases are occurring in the unvaccinated population. Right now at Merritt, we have many beds occupied by COVID patients. And we are told that those are COVID patients who have not been vaccinated and are now at the hospital, many of them in dire health. A respected physician at the hospital told us last week that in every admission he has made, only one was a vaccinated person. And that person was in advanced age and had pre-existing pulmonary conditions. If you look at statistics right now statewide, 89% of those currently hospitalized are hospitalized because they have COVID and they were never vaccinated. Statewide, 85% of the deaths we have had due to COVID, unvaccinated individuals. And so our appeal is this, save a life, namely yours. It stops with you. Get your shot. If you are able, have a conversation with your doctor and choose the best course of action for your health and that of your family and friends. In addition to that, we want to let you know, we've been looking at the information and we don't go to Facebook for our education. We look to the doctors. And what the doctors are telling us, and I know we laugh and it really is crazy how many people during this pandemic have received their Facebook medical degree. And you know, that is our problem. Because people are relying on rumor and innuendo and political hype and they aren't actually talking to their healthcare providers. The healthcare providers are telling us, they themselves have taken the vaccine because they know it to be safe. And if you don't believe it, just look at the statistics. We've had 7,500 deaths due to COVID in this state. How many deaths have we had due to the vaccine? Side effects of the vaccine? Zero. Not a single documented death as a result of the vaccine. Now, yes, every medication has its side effects. And we're not saying that the vaccine is proper for everyone, just as there are some medications that aren't proper for everyone. That's between you and your doctor. But we are saying this, in the vast, vast majority of cases, it has been proven that this vaccine can be safely administered and the statistics do not lie. I will repeat, 97% of the cases we've had in the recent outbreak, unvaccinated individuals. Anyone who wants to pay, play Russian roulette with their life, that's up to you. But I would make an appeal, please talk to your healthcare professional. Please make wise choices. Please do the right thing for you, for our community. It stops with you. With that said, we will now move to approval of minutes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask the board consider approving the minutes for the special call board meeting we had on June 15th of 2021?
Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Hall?
Um, I don't have the minutes, but I do have the minutes of June 28th. And I move that we table the minutes of June 28th until the corrections can be made in consultation with our attorney.
Okay.
Second.
A second motion made by Alderwoman Hall to table the minutes of June 28th pending consultation with the attorney and motion seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk.
I think it's pretty much it. They really adjusted 15, so we just don't not do any of them?
Okay.
We're on the 15.
They don't have those.
I know, but you jumped to 28, so we went back to 15.
We don't have them.
Was that the 15 also?
We don't have them.
Are they on table?
I know I have. They gave me all the things.
I got all the 23rd.
I got all the 15.
Oh, my goodness. Well, let's get those, let's get those handed out so we can take care of those.
Okay.
Those special call minutes are very simple. There's not a whole lot to them. And Alderman Davis, if you'll share yours.
They passed mine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
In lieu of time, we can table all of these until our next meeting?
Certainly. We, we do have, well, in that case, would you, would you like to make a motion? We table the others as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion made, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on that motion? Call for the question.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We now will go to our welcome of visitors. We will remind that in order to be placed on the agenda, you must be, you must communicate with our office the week before the meeting. Once you're placed on the agenda, you are permitted five minutes to speak. Ms. Abada Hill, you are next up on the agenda and it's good to see you today, Ms. Hill.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before she come up.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving.
And it's pertaining to what you just stated?
Yes.
And so is that placed on our website, the information? Because that needs to be on different platforms so that all members will know, not just on this meeting, but place it on our website, city website?
That's a good idea.
In order to get on the agenda. That's information that the public needs to know.
That's a great idea. Mr. Hinkle, if you'll get that posted on there, the instructions for getting on a board agenda. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hill?
Okay, Mr. Hinkle is loading up my Microsoft Word document. But this morning, I would like to address the board and ask for their consideration and some things with the $2 million bond budget. And I did look online and I did see, well, proposed, proposed, and I also saw that there were a lot of things that haven't been incorporated. So basically right now, after reviewing several parks, there are items not listed that need addressing. Working with grants and line items myself, there is a need for redress at times. I am familiar with word of mouth on contracts and it's a dismal affair when things aren't put in print. The first thing I have is the retainer wall at the Pavilion Repair at Duncan Park, which is not listed. If you can see the first picture, it is in bad need of repair and the steps need some type of handrail or either some dirt showed up in there. And things like this can really make your budget go out of balance and I do know there is $20,000 left. The second item is the playground wall. And if you look at the next display, you'll see that wall. I took that picture about five or six weeks ago. And it just so happened, I was going past the park Saturday and I saw some people having a party there. So Lee, who works for Natchez Heating and Cooling, had put all this up so his family wouldn't have to look at that dismal site. So these are things that I'm asking to be put in the budget also. The restrooms are dismal and those, those are, the restrooms at some of the parks is my biggest things because I, I do go to the parks a lot. Just the other day, I was at Jack Waite, I went to the restroom and luckily, those bathrooms are super nice, but when I shut the door, the light wouldn't come on and I had to leave the door partially cracked to use the restroom. There was toilet paper in there because the neighborhood people use that park quite a bit. So I would like to ask that they fix the lights in the Jack Waite Park restroom. Also on the next page, you'll see the picture of the restroom. He probably already went through it, but it's nice. But this next site, kids cannot play in this, this is poison ivy growing. I'd like to see if that can be added into the budget, that can be resurfaced. Now, this is my neighborhood, Jack Waite.
That's right.
The next item, I did talk to Alderman Fraser about this. These, these things are probably not functional, calcium, you know, field is on the right. I don't know if you can see, this thing is broken. Also, I'd like to see that resurfaced and I'd like to see some type of signage put up there because I remember when I used to take my kids over there, my grandkids, you get over there, sometimes the water park is operational, sometimes it's not. So I was hoping that some type of signage can be put up there. Also, on number six, I talked to Henry Harris about the resurfacing of the tennis courts. The courts are cracked. He says that actually they need to be resurfaced because they're slick. I don't know if you can see in the background, but this fence is leaning. Also, I looked up, all the lights are cracked. This is not in the budget, in the recreation budget. This is at North Natchez at the youth center.
I believe it's supposed to be in the budget.
Well, I looked at the list that was posted on the website and it's, and these things that I'm putting on here is not in that budget.
We'll double check on that because we, we do want that done.
I think they are in the budget.
We'll make sure. Thank you.
Okay, because the list that was put on the website, all this stuff is not on it. And then it says tennis courts, but it's vague. It doesn't say which tennis courts, it doesn't say what's going to be done. It says 160,000. At the end of the day, I would like for all the Alderman to agree, if the money runs out, what can be done? Because our communities matter to us also. This is a horrible site.
Ms. Hill, all of the, all of the tennis courts are going to be resurfaced, including North Natchez Park. That's in the bond.
Okay.
That's an $2 million dollar. Everything that you addressed is in our bond.
Okay, okay, well, it was, it's not listed on the website.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I'm bringing this up now. And I got my timer on five minutes.
This is very helpful.
When you start talking, I pause.
You keep going. You keep going, Ms. Hill.
Okay, all right. And so this is a Harvard site right here. I know you're not going to like this, but this is the restroom at the North Natchez Park. It's on a septic tank. That line is going to have to be checked. I don't even know if those toilets are working over there, but that, the doors need to be marked, men and women, also at Jack Waite Park also. This is the Concord Park. All of this dirt has been washed out. There needs to be some type of stepping stones going over there. Those restrooms are horrible. They did finally get the trees up from over there, but this is some of the things that I'm talking about because I was raised in New Orleans and the parks are pretty much, I don't know what they're like now, but there were two in my neighborhood and kids don't go out a lot like they used to, but still, you want the aesthetics of the park to be nice and you want to do some things that make it look really relatively safe and nice enough for you to go to if you want to have a picnic. And so the last thing is, I would like to see the city put something on the website, on our site, the Natchez City site, because there's 11 parks there and it's only four pictures on the website. The first one is Duncan Park. You can just see, if you scroll down to the four pictures that are in a row, you can see Duncan Park right there. This is all we have on our website for our parks. So we need some more pictures on there. And also like to ask Visit Natchez to put more than two pictures of Duncan Park on their site, you know, because there's only two pictures on the site. One has writing on it and one is like a, like a misty picture of just the golf course, but there is a video for some, something, but we need to be promoted more for that. So the reason I'm asking you all to incorporate this stuff, put it on the budget, not just word of mouth, just put it in there so we can know it's going to be done. Because, you know, word, working with grants myself, I can tell you for sure that if it's not actually written down and at the end of the day, when you come to what's got to be done and what's got to be swept under the table, I would like to see the Alderman make the decision unanimously together, what stays and hopefully on my side of town, these things don't get swept under the carpet. Thank you.
Ms. Hill, I can't thank you enough. I want to tell you, what you just presented, what you just presented make I want to tell you, what you just presented, what you just presented makes the case for why this renewal project is so important to Natural. When I became mayor a year ago,
Absolutely.
and began looking at the condition of our parks, I found it atrocious. And to imagine that they have been allowed to be in that condition for years. That is why we have worked so hard this year to do a full-blown assessment, to pass a budget, uh, to get a, uh, to get a bond issue done, and the money will be here soon. That's why it's so important to me that we have a full-time staff in Parks and Recreation. We have not had a full-time Parks and Recreation Director in many years. So let this be a time of beginning, and all of the input you received is very helpful. Thank you for that, and I hope that we can all have a copy of your report because we need to make sure that all these items that you mentioned are.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to reiterate that.
Alderwoman Hall?
Yes, that, uh, thank you, Ms., Ms. Hill, but I would like to say too, another thank you to our Mayor's Renewal Task Force that did assess all six ci- city parks, and everything that Ms. Hill addressed has been addressed and is now in this bond.
Okay. All right. And we'll, we'll continue to work on that, thank you. Alderman Fraser?
Uh, what Ms. Hill presented is just a tidbit. Uh, I mean, she had, really, she had more than, and, and, and she's very concerned about the, the parks, as you know. She just didn't concentrate on one park, she couldn't concentrate on all the city parks and the city of Natural. And I think she did a, she did an excellent job, Ms. Hill, of presenting this, and what she, what, and what she brought to me was she, at North Natural Park, she broke it down, she broke everything down, the bathrooms, how much, she wanted to see exactly how much it's gonna cost to repair the bathroom, how much it's gonna cost, she broke it down, line, line item, my line item. So I would like to say again, thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Le-, Ms. Hill, for coming with that presentation. She shared that information, and I felt that board needed to know it because I do agree, if it's not written out, what you can see, it may be excluded. Since it is included, we want to see those things take place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Smith?
Um, Ms. Mayor, I suggest you add her to the task force.
Oh, most definitely, I was gonna actually say that.
Then she can go through all the pictures that Richard took, too, y'all can see, you can see all of them, there are so many more than even that.
There's an exhaustive slideshow that's been done by the task force, and Ms. Hill, we would very much like for you to serve on our task force if you would have the time and be willing to, we would. And, uh, and I also want to say, from beginning, I, I want everyone to understand, uh, and I may, I may, uh, I, 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 I may, um, ah, let, let a little emotion show as I say this. You know, something that's wrong in America, and it has plagued so many communities, is this political, it's a, it's a political agenda, and its only purpose is to divide. And many of the groups behind these despicable tactics don't really care about the issues, they only care about dividing. And time and time again, we have had these meetings, and we have discussed the fact, and it's on paper, that our recreational renewal program is for all six parks. And it is something that is for everyone and every community. And yet, we have had individuals sit through these meetings, hearing that, seeing the numbers, and then post on Facebook, and this is where I get a little emotional. They're only doing it for Duncan Park. They're only doing it, you know, and it's this constant thing that we've seen in our society, it has shut down Washington, D.C. It has absolutely brought havoc to so many communities across America, but this is not Natural. We are not about black, white, Republican, Democrat, red, blue, or what area you live in. We are about doing what is fair for the entire city. I want to throw out a figure right now, as we look into our parks, you realize that on the list, we do have bathroom renovations. We do have new equipment, we do have benches, we have tables, eighty-eight capacity in a lot of these areas. We do also have the renovation of the youth center that for many years has been in deplorable condition at North Natural Park. We have renovation of the clubhouse at Duncan Park that for many years has been in deplorable condition. You ought to go look at those bathrooms, atrocious. We have resurfacing of tennis courts, adding new tennis courts, adding pickleball, renovating the ball fields, better lighting, new major playground sets in excess of seventy-five thousand each, one for North Natural, one for Duncan Park. I want to share this, Duncan Park is two hundred three acres. We have in the budget, money established for Duncan Park, it breaks down to six thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars per acre. These are figures, we've talked about these figures in these meetings. And so if anyone wants to go out and make a Facebook post today that they're doing everything at Duncan Park and doing nothing at North Natural Park, I call them out for that despicable tactic of trying to divide our community. And in calling them out, let me give you this number. Duncan Park, six thousand eight hundred ninety-seven per acre. North Natural Park, been on the plan for months, sixty-two thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars per acre. I think the numbers speak for themselves. And one last comment. We get beat up about the parks, but may I remind you, I've only been mayor here. The parks didn't get this way overnight. But I am determined that they will not be this way for much longer. And if anyone thinks that it's a black, white, this side, that side issue, I want them to understand, no. It's for the children, it's for our citizens, it's for the elder, and it's for all of Natural. And we are not playing sides, and we are not dividing this community. We are doing what needs to be done, and we're gonna do it over the entire city. And people, just get ready, you're gonna see results. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Fraser?
I concur with, 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 uh, what you said, uh, we having the same issue all over, all over the country. As you say, the same problem in Washington, devices. But I would like to say to you, the board, and the rest of the citizens of Natural, let's, that's what we need to do, let's not talk, let's action, let the action show, let, let us show that we can do this.
Amen.
And not just, like I say, that is what killing this country, divisism. It, and, and this is divisism has just not just started, it been started, but now we're getting to the problem. People are frustrated, pandemic, and a lack of leadership in government and everything else. Now, what we need in America, and what we need in Natural is action, to take a step forward and start doing, not just talking, but let's do it.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderwoman Hall?
Thank you for your remarks, I greatly appreciate that. I would like to add that we should receive our bond August seventeenth, but these will not be spent overnight. Be patient with this process, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Irving?
It was brought to my attention by a community member that we also need to, um, check the electrical hookup at each park. If they're wanting to do a, a jump B site out there to bring up, what, what do they call it, the jumping, um, help me out, you all.
Bouncy house.
Yeah, bouncy house.
Oh, yes, yes, to be able to hook those facilities up.
There is a problem with, um, each park.
Okay.
Um, Jack Waite Park, um, North Natural Park, Concord Park, and they've had a problem at, um, Duncan Park as well.
Okay.
So those need to be checked.
Uh, thank you, Alderwoman Irving, we'll check into that. Anything else? Ms., Ms. Hill, you opened up a really great subject for us. And thank you again for your concern, and we appreciate that. May I also say, yours was a model presentation. It was succinct, it was under five minutes, you had pictures, and you also, now we have a document to refer to. That's the way it's done, thank you. The next item we have, and the only reason it went over five minutes is, well, I think I took up a lot of time. But now, we have, uh, with us, I believe, do we have anyone with Macedonia Baptist Church here today? Uh, we may have settled a lot of this, I, I'll just give a brief report. Um, we had a very good meeting with, uh, a, a, a dear, dear friend to Natural, Reverend Clifford Marvel. Uh, this was about two weeks ago, and members of his congregation from Macedonia. And so, uh, we actually, uh, I said Clifford, Clifton, Marvel. We actually had a follow-up meeting with them, and Alderwoman Irving did a fantastic job of pulling it together as a, um, a neighborhood watch meeting in her community. And we discussed a number of issues that are of concern to that, uh, area, on Minor Street, Monerville. Um, and I guess we had such a good meeting, they didn't have to follow up and coming today. Um, Alderwoman Irving, would you like to make any reports about me? And then I do have a few numbers to share, we, we looked up some figures as a result of some discussion in that meeting.
Okay, well, I just want to say, overall, it was a good meeting, um, some issues were addressed in, um, and that was pertaining to security in the area. Um, also, um, those were addressed by our police chief and, and how to carry them out. The mayor has to, um, ask that those, um, ordinance be enforced. And so that has been addressed, and I'm, it's been addressed with that, and overall, it was a great meeting. I just want to thank the, thank the, the department head directors that came out and attended the meetings. We had Mr. Joe People in place for Mr. Justin Dollar. We had Mr. James Johnston, who answered questions pertaining to blight, and when he gets up, I do want to, um, reference that the blighted properties in the area. Um, we had Mr. Rico Gianni, who answered questions pertaining to planning or zoning in our area in Monerville. He was able to answer that. We had Mrs. Anita Smith, and we had Mr. Johnny Baldwin, our code enforcers. And overall, a great meeting, we heard concerns from the community, members that live there, and those that did not, that knew that a meeting was taking place, that came in to voice their concerns. So I just want to say, um, thank you all for all that you all do for the city of Natural to help us unite and move this city forward, and thank you.
Thank you, and it was really good to see our department directors out at three o'clock on a Friday, and we were there till almost five. And so, yes, I thank you all for coming out. And, uh, and I will say, there were some questions raised in that meeting as to, uh, things that we are doing in that area. Uh, we actually had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Dollar yesterday with regard to dilapidated properties, and he reported that over the past month or, or so, uh, there have been fifty, uh, derelict properties cleaned up by the city, most of them in that area. So, Mr. Dollar, thank you for all of that. Uh, we also have gotten a good report, uh, you know, questions were asked about money being spent, uh, in the area of North Natural. Um, we are excited, Alderwoman Hall, I, I want to thank you for your persistence on Marblestone, and we are approaching, uh, the completion of that project in October. And also Alderman Fraser, in your ward, there on Daisy Street, and we are nearing completion of that. That represents one point five million, uh, in, uh, in projects that will soon be done. And then we also, uh, you know, back in January, we had a, uh, major cleanup of the Dr. Martin Luther King Street, and we did it from beginning to end, and we are going to be doing that again in January. We made a commitment to do that every year, and that was a twenty thousand dollar project. And we also devoted twenty thousand, uh, in this past, uh, budget year, just that we're about to conclude. We, uh, put twenty thousand toward removal of derelict properties, most of those in, uh, North Natural. Uh, and so that's, uh, that's good. And then, the subject of Morgantown Road came up in the meeting, and I want to just state this for everyone to understand, we've been working very hard to secure funding. You know, MDOT giveth and MDOT taketh away. And the money was there for the county to repair that, uh, first mile and a half of Morgantown Road that is so horrendous. Um, and MDOT took it away to devote to bridge repairs in other areas of the state, and have not been forthcoming in giving that money back. But, uh, we've been working with the help of our lobbyist and working in partnership with the county, Angela Hutchins, and we, uh, are very optimistic that a bill is about to be passed in Washington that will provide two point four million in funding for the Morgantown Road Repair Project. Once that is done, in talking to President Hutchins just yesterday, the county is optimistic that, uh, the balance of the funds will come from MDOT and very possibly from some of the ARP funds, the American Rescue Funds. So let's all pray that that bill passes, we'll know by September. And if that happens, then some major improvements to Morgantown will be in our future. In the meantime, we had a meeting with MDOT last week, and just everyone be known, and Alderman Davis, need to make sure you're aware of this, uh, bulk of this is in your ward. In about a week, maybe two weeks, equipment will be on Morgantown Road, and MDOT, at our request, is striping the entire road, a center stripe and also striping along the edges. Now, we know it's not a perfect fix, but it certainly is an improvement while we wait on these funds. And, uh, and I want to say again, like I said a little while ago, Morgantown didn't get that way overnight. And it's taking a while to get the funds, but this is the best light we have seen. And if that two point four million comes our way after September, then we're cooking with gas. Uh, the plans are already done, and once the county can then, uh, find the other funds, it's about a three point five million dollar project, Morgantown is going to get done. So that's enough? Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
Yes, I just want to, um, piggyback a litter on litter. One of the concerns that came out too, um, in that meeting is that over in the North Concord area, Mayor, it, um, suggestions were possibly made if we can get containers, because that's basically a walk area. We have a lot of youth outside the parks. Um, it's heavily, it's heavy littered over there, and so we were wondering, could we possibly get bins of any kind placed in specific areas, maybe Brenham Avenue, Concord, in that walkway, placed out so that we can help alleviate that?
Let's look into that, okay. All right, we're gonna move on, thank you. Uh, just important updates, and while we have everyone here, we wanted to make sure all of that was shared. Now, other city business, Morgan Groover, I don't know if Ms. Groover is here in person, Ms. Groover? And it's not necessary, but Ms. Groover, I do want to let you know, Ms. Groover has written a letter. This letter is a very, uh, important step forward for the city of Natural. Uh, for many years, as you know, the Junior Auxiliary has been in possession of the canteen and that old dairy facility at, uh, behind Auburn, at Duncan Park. The club has reduced its membership, it is unable now to care for that property, and would like to donate that property back to the city. We're not gonna take action right now other than to ask our city attorney to prepare a document for approval at a later date that would allow the city to accept the donation. What will we do with this donation? Well, that canteen obviously is important to the city, it's a voting precinct, but it also is ideal to become the future offices for the city's newly improved Parks and Recreation Department. And that is where we would propose that the new full-time director and staff be housed. And so it's a, talk about good timing, it's a good thing for Natural. I don't think any board action is needed at this time other than we might, just for the sake of the minutes, entertain a motion requesting the city attorney to prepare a document allowing the board to accept this donation. Uh, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Motion made, properly seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? We will now call for the question.
Call.
We'll proceed to a vote, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries. We have Ms. Chesney Doyle. We're going to introduce Ms. Chesney for a presentation that will last about 10 minutes. It's important conversation regarding the, uh, D and A Downtown Natchez Alliance and the progress that they are making. Uh, Ms. Doyle, you're recognized.
I have some materials to, to hand out. And, um, in fact, could I have a little help? Yeah, so let's see. There's a set that goes to each one here. So while we, while we pass out these materials, I just want to thank you all for, um, for the time. And, um, I also want to, um, I was thinking, as I sat in the back, that this is the first time that I have made a presentation in this room. Without my mother by my side. I thought I could do this without getting emotional.
Ms. Doyle, if you will, could we just say for the record how much we love and appreciate you and your family?
Mama was my best friend, my partner in crime. And I inherited my love of this community from my mother. And to us, Natchez, just indulge me, please. Natchez is, it's not just a place. It's a member of the family. And all the work that she did and that I continue to do, we do for love. And the goal is to improve the quality of life for everyone in this community. And I apologize for my tears, but as you, as you all know, Mama died of COVID in March after a five-month, um, five-month battle. And this has been a really, um, difficult year for us personally. And I want to thank all of you
Thank you.
for your love and support during this time. Wow. I really controlled my emotions on that one.
I think you did one of those.
But I just want you to know how important you all are as a body, as individuals, to me, to my family and to everyone we love and care about. And thank you for indulging me on that. Now, um, on to, um, uh, positive news. Uh, we've heard some really-
You might need to pull the microphone closer to you.
Okay. Thank you. We've heard some really, um, incredible, uh, presentations this morning. And I'm particularly excited about the, the, um, recreation program because, you know, this is all part of the quality of life goals for our community. And until we have people living and loving life in Natchez, you know, we're not going to really get where we need to go, you know? All the pretty signage and, and, and all the paved roads won't matter unless we have people who are happy living here. And that will also enable us to attract new residents. And that is what this is all about. Whether it's parks or downtown development, um, it is all about making this community a great place to, to live, work, and play. And so, um, to get started with our presentation, I'm here on behalf of the newly formed Downtown Natchez Alliance, which is the downtown entity that's recommended in the downtown master plan. And I would like to, um, introduce some of our, uh, board members who are here today. Let's see, who is here? Joanne Grunfeld, who is our secretary. And Norma West, who is our treasurer.
There's Norma.
There's Norma, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Francis, hi Francis. Norma West, I was like, something's wrong with this. And, um, see, Michael Pace, who is our president-elect. Uh, and I don't believe, uh, I don't believe anyone else could make it. But, um, I do have a list of the board members.
Mr. Purnell.
Oh, Robert Purnell, thank you. All right. And I have, um, a list of, uh, the board members to share with you. Um, but specifically, uh, we are here to ask for two things. First of all, it is time, um, for us to join the Mississippi Main Street, uh, Association. And with that membership will come all sorts of resources for, um, for Natchez, for the Natchez community and for all of our objectives. And one of the most important things that Mississippi Main Street will do for us is that they will, um, send their people here to work with us, to, uh, train our volunteers to, uh, you know, organize and activate this tremendous army of individuals that we have in downtown Natchez. Not just the merchants and the residents and, and the stakeholders, but, you know, anyone who considers downtown the heart of our community, um, can get involved in the Downtown Natchez Alliance and become, um, part of this army of volunteers. Of course, we also manage the Downtown Merchant Group and, and all sorts of, um, of other agendas. Did everybody get a copy of the letter? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, and so the first, uh, the first order of business is, um, to, uh, present to you a, a resolution that Mississippi Main Street requires us to, um, in fact, here's that. Yeah, it's another stack of papers. Um, and we are required to have the city designate us as the official, um, Main Street entity in Natchez Adams and, with Natchez. And that, um, will enable us to submit our application, to become a member of this group and to have all of these resources and training, um, available to us. Of course, the Mississippi Main Street Group, they also work with CVBs and economic development entities and downtown entities, because all of these groups work together. Uh, so Richard is helping, um, me, uh, with that handout. And in the package that I already gave you, the second, um, the second letter is, uh, document is a list of our board.
Thank you.
Um, our current board. And you can see at the bottom, the, the rotations. And our second request is to ask you to consider renewing your, your annual $50,000 commitment to D and A so that we can engage the professional director who can stand here and make these presentations without emotion and, um, help us take the, the, uh, the organization to, to the next level. Mayor Gibson, you and this board, you all have, you have done things that five years ago, no one could even dream was possible. And humbly, I say that a lot of the work that the community did to put together the, the master plan with the city and the thousands of hours of, of volunteer effort that's gone into that by hundreds of people, um, you know, has contributed, uh, to this, this great energy that we now, um, see. And the Downtown Natchez Alliance can, um, can be your partner in making this exciting growth that is happening long-lasting and permanent. And I, I, I wanted to, um, give you an example of the kind of things that the Downtown Natchez Alliance has been doing. I'm probably running over my time already.
We, we gave you, we, we gave you a little grace at the beginning.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Matt Gibson. So I, Dustin has put up on the, um, the board there, one of the projects that, that we have been working on. And this is the kind of thing that this group will do that really is not in anybody else's ball, ball court. So again, I have another stack of papers. I was going to staple all these. Can we pass these out? All right. So what we have here is the Downtown Wayfinding, uh, project. And we started this in, uh, 2019. It was one of the, the main recommendations in the master plan to, uh, create not only signage around the city that says Historic Downtown Natchez this way, but also to create signage inside the city that says, you know, shopping, restaurants, Black History District, um, Broadway Entertainment Area, you know, whatever we want the signs to say. So we started with phase one of this project, working with MDOT. And, um, very, um, well, we put a lot of work into it. And I just wanted you to see, Dustin, you could flip through, uh, this PowerPoint. But this is the, the level of detail, the level of care, the level of professionalism that the Downtown Natchez Alliance will bring to these kind of projects. We had a stellar committee, Richard Brannon, uh, Justin Dollar, Kathleen Bond, uh, and, uh, of course Rico and Phil Walker was leading the committee. And we got down to the nitty-gritty where we had the meeting with MDOT to get permission to put these signs up. And ultimately, what MDOT said was, well, we can't have signs that say Historic Downtown Natchez because there is no actual district named Historic Downtown Natchez. So as unbelievable as it is, but I, um, I, I copied for your eyes only some of the, the correspondence so that you can get, uh, brought up to, to speed on that. But you'll see on the back page, you know, here's Historic Downtown St. Petersburg, Virginia. Historic Downtown, um, Henderson, uh, in, in another state. So this is not something new that's been done. But here in Mississippi, we have, and MDOT has these very strict rules. So the, the solution to that is provided by our Main Street program. So as part of, being part of Mississippi Main Street, we, um, we have to declare a, uh, a Main Street district. And here is the map. You've all got this in your package. Um, that was worked out with Rico and, um, our board. And it's basically the study area for the downtown master plan with the Leisure and Recreation District layered on top of it. So that becomes what we call our Historic Downtown Natchez District. Our board has approved this. We would like the city to also approve it and the name, because that gives us more oomph when we go back to MDOT and say, guess what? We now have a district named Historic Downtown Natchez. And then with a letter from the mayor, they will consider approving this, this sign, the signs around town. And I, you know, I, I know it seems simple, but, uh, it has not been. And, and so I, I just bring this one, one project, and there are many others, whether it's plywood ordinances for windows or the sidewalk cafe ordinance or, uh, the mural, uh, painting on walls program and policies that we've also been working on. There are many things of this nature that have not, um, been, uh, promoted recently and that have not gone anywhere, um, mainly for lack of a paid professional staff. And we can just throw COVID in there as well. So, um, anyway, so back to, so what you have here is the map. And then you have some of the background about this particular project for wayfinding. And then also, we have our letter of, uh, request, requesting the resolution to designate D and O as, D and A as, uh, our local Main Street entity. And then the request, um, to, uh, to re, uh, recommit 50,000 for going forward. We have raised $30,000 in private funding. With the 50 from the city for the next fiscal, fiscal year, we will have the money in hand to move forward and hire a professional, highly qualified, highly effective director who will work with the city, who will work with Visit Natchez, with Natchez, Inc., the Historic Natchez Foundation. All of these entities will work together in a symbiotic relationship to achieve the city's goals for, uh, downtown development. And the master plan is not engraved in stone. It is a living document. And it will change as, as progress happens and as goals change. And so that said, I ask you to consider, respectfully consider, uh, our request.
Doyle, I really appreciate your passion and what you've done to help bring this together. And, uh, and, and also doing this today, when I know it is difficult. And, and so we're here supporting you as friends and thanking you for what you've, uh, meant to us and to Natchez. I also want to say, I personally thank you for all of your help during this pandemic. Uh, people don't know, but you've been there as a private, uh, resource, a personal friend, um, hel- helping us.
Thank you.
Even two weeks ago to set up a vaccination site at the State of the City event. You, your passion for Natchez is admirable. Um, I would say, you know, because we are in the budget process, this is how we did this last year. We took this under advisement. And then when we did formalize our budget, we, we saw, uh, we were able last year to find that 50,000 appropriation. I would like to say that we would be able to do that this year. I, I think it's very important, uh, to move forward. So much groundwork has been laid. And, uh, uh, I just don't know that we can take that action today. Uh, depends on the, uh, you know, board members. Alderwoman Smith, I think you had mentioned something. I, I want to mention it. We were just looking at the figures. You want to ask the question?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to?
No, I will.
Okay, Alderwoman Smith.
No, I was just saw a gaping hole in your, in your, um, budget statement with the income area. And I don't see that the county has, um, given any money toward this. And I guess I want, I just want to preface that by saying, having gone to the MML for years, we are the envy of cities all over because this plan was made with, with donations and private, of companies and private citizens. And we did not have to spend this money to do this. And people just can't believe that people love Natchez that much to do that. So that, and all, you hit the pavements all over and, and organized all that. So thank you. But, you know, in, in industrial prospects, how, I've often heard them, when I've met them, they've come to Natchez. And some of them have, have housed their companies here now. They say one of the biggest things in the quality of life is the downtown, the liveliness, the beauty and keeping up the downtown. So I believe this is huge, hugely important. Um, I, I, we have, we have supervisors that represent. The city is in the county. So I would like to, y'all, to talk to them again about-
Well, we, thank you. And we will. When Phil Walker was here the last trip, we did meet with all of the new, uh, supervisors. And, um, felt pretty good about that. But I, I, I do think that in the past, that, that the county has not, they have not felt that downtown benefited the, the county. And I think that, um, with your help, we can re-approach the county. Traditionally, these downtown entities are funded by the city, the county, the CVB, our Visit Natchez, and the Economic Development Entity, which would be Natchez, Inc. Those are the usual entities that chip in to fund, um, a downtown organization. And, you know, I brought the example of the, the sign is just to show that we don't do the same things that the other entities do. We do the things that no one has time to do, that need to be done. And that may seem mundane and not, not a multi- And that may seem mundane and not, not a multi-million dollar project, but, you know, the, uh, the small retailer, the antique dealer who wants, just wants a sign that says Antiques Road This Way, we can do all of that, as well as the more major, um, projects.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Hall.
Uh, I agree that we do need to take this under advisement as far as the 50,000, although it is a designated, um, alliance for us to give contributions to. It's under 302-556-690. So, it is, it has been in our budget in previous years. So, I do think we need to consider this, giving them that. But I would also, um, I'm not ready to designate the downtown area historic yet. Didn't hear you say anyone from Historic Natchez Foundation was involved in that conversation. You may have, I just missed that. But also, as far as signage, I'm glad you have Mr. Gianni involved, because other entities are involved in signage as well. So, but I do support what you're doing.
That, that was a committee appointed by the mayor, and we met at City Hall.
Yes.
And Justin Doller was on that committee. We had had many meetings, we had the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce was involved, and Historic Natchez was involved, National Park Service was involved in this, so. And also, we have solicited the input of Historic Natchez Foundation on, um, this, this, uh, these boundaries, and.
But I think we'd have to do an ordinance too, designating that in our ordinance as well, so we need to have more company.
Okay, well, would, would you be able to consider, um, our request today to designate the Downtown Natchez Alliance as the Main Street entity? And that would allow us to go ahead and, and, um, put our proposal in for their board?
Yes.
And there is a resolution that they've provided, provided us.
Yes, I make the motion for, to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the Mississippi Main Street program.
Second.
Alderwoman Smith's made the motion, Alderwoman Irving has seconded it. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Well, I, I have discussion. I want to say that, um, when we were on the coast just this past week, and it's been the last administration as well, I've always stopped at the table with downtown, um, well, Mississippi Main Street. And it's just so important, that's going to be the blueprint. If we're going to move our city forward, we're attracting more visitors here, and attracting our residents to come downtown to shop as well, that's so important that we consider, you know, this 50,000. Because when you go to other cities, where is their main attraction? It's the downtown. And so, we've got to focus more, and so I have no problem. I have no problem, it's not in my ward, but I will support the 50,000 for downtown. I will support that. So, we need to bring it to a motion. We need to do this now, let's do this today. Let's take care of this today.
We need to do the budget first.
Do the budget.
Okay, well, we'll strongly consider.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We need to do that, that will get, um, that will be a part of what we would do for our new budget year.
Thank you.
We'll make it.
I appreciate it, everyone, and, um, Mr. Cowell, there is a resolution that, did you get a copy? And that, that would be great.
The question's been called?
Second.
All right, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question too? So, with this designation for the district, and that for the signage, tell, tell us, tell me, reiterate with me exactly when you need that, and.
Well, um, the, the, uh, the entity, our board already designated the district. And we've been in many meetings with many entities, and it's really just for our purposes. If we want to use it to influence MDOT, and there's no urgency on, on this, then the city should also, I, I think, approve the designated district. And if we need to revise our, our boundaries, we can do that, you know? But, um, in many discussions with Rico and Mr. Walker and other entities, you know, this is the area of the, of the study. And then we added this Canal Street leg, because the LRD goes out to the visitor center.
Tell them what the acronym, please, LRD.
Oh, the Leisure and Recreation District, or the GoCup.
Yeah.
The GoCup District. So, we want to be inclusive. The downtown master plan takes us from the Bluff to the Black History District. Our, our, um, study area ends at Holy Family Catholic Church. It includes the Banks House, it includes Revel's Plaza. You know, we don't want to just focus on the, the core of the traditional downtown business district, the CVD, because that's not what the downtown master plan was about, and that's not what Natchez is about.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, um.
I don't want to prolong this conversation, but I think we need to look at the ordinance, because Mr. Mr. Gianni has brought to the ordinance committee changes to the Historic Downtown is what you're discussing. And there has to be an ordinance, that's all I'm saying. I agree with what you're saying, but we cannot designate that today.
This is a Main Street district, this is not a local preservation.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to say for sake of time, we've already taken care of the motion, we're taking the other, I think, under advisement. Uh, Alderwoman Smith, have you had any closing questions or remarks?
Just seen us spend quite a bit of money lately, so, and I'm fine with putting this off, but we haven't been so putting up a lot of things. But we will put this off until our, we get a little bit more in the budget.
It's not, I think, la- last year it was done in the final approval of the budget, and I'm sure that we will deal with it at that time. But, you know, in fairness, our department directors, everyone, we tell them now, we aren't giving you a final answer until we have the final budget, because wow, we are watching the dollars here lately, we really are. Any further comments?
Great presentation.
A great presentation, thank you.
I didn't, I couldn't follow Levada, she was, uh, she was stellar, but next time.
I want to.
Thank you, thank you all, and, um, you do have some letters of support in there. There's a letter from Mississippi Main Street, you know, Regina Sharver, that was all the state board, so that's all good for Natchez.
It's really great, it is. And I thank you, Ms. West, for being here, the board, Joe.
Thank you all.
Ms. Brumfield, uh, Mr. Purnell, uh, other board members, we appreciate all the work you're doing.
Would you have a list in your package?
Yes, I saw that. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Smith.
I just want to ask that if you're, um, work with, you're, great relationship with county and the board president.
Well, we certainly will talk.
On that contribution.
We certainly will, thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson, you are next up. You know what?
I thought I was third.
My glasses fooled me.
I thought I was third down.
People don't realize, I, I fake it pretty good, but I can, anyway. If, if, if I'm never not wearing my glasses and I come up to you and call you by a different name, you'll understand. But, you know, since you're up there.
That's fine.
Mr. Johnson, we're going to let you.
All right, down Dustin, down. I'm not controlling this. All right, I did place my.
What threw me too, is your very well organized report is the very next item in my book here, so you did a good job.
I, I put my report on your desk early this morning. I had some, um, last minute changes to it as well, so that'll come towards the end. We did receive bids for the City Hall re-roofing project, uh, this past Thursday at 2:00. The bids are summarized for your review. Do notice, the bids came in below budget, and, uh, uh, very unexpectedly below budget. You see where our construction budget is listed right there as well. And right above there, you see the add alternate one and add alternate two. So, with that said, and our match is still on a 65-35 basis, as we had budgeted, and the monies are requested for carryover as well. So, staff is requesting a motion to accept the low bid of Independent Roofing Solutions, Inc. for the base bid, and to add alternates, and to allow the mayor to sign a contract with Independent Roofing Solutions, Inc. subject to review and approval archives and history.
So, move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall and seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, Alderman Dillard.
Yeah, so remind me again, what is the city's commitment on the 65-35, we're just doing the math here, what do you come up with?
I don't have the, I didn't do the math, I know we had budgeted a total, and that was in the budget report given to the board at the last board meeting.
Can you give me that fund number of that budget money?
It's under the general fund. Wait just a minute, Mr. Dillard, I did bring it with me, hold on.
We have your report, Jane.
Uh, it's under the general fund.
Which one?
And we're carrying forward roughly $74,000.
Can you identify what, on these, uh, budget status reports, give me a fund number and a page number?
I can't give you a fund number, I may have a page number.
Uh, we have it, uh, Madam Clerk.
The seventy-three thousand, seventy-three thousand, six oh two.
Seventy-three, six oh two is what we're budgeting forward, yes.
Zero, zero, one, zero, zero, zero.
Three, four, five.
Yep.
Three, four, five.
Thank you.
There it is.
And that amount is budgeted, what, 70,000?
Seventy-three, six oh two, Mr. Dillard.
Seventy-three, six oh two.
All right, so we, this, this is very good news.
It was very surprising, yes.
And it's good news too, indicating that perhaps, uh, building prices, construction prices are starting to go back down, uh, after their escalation during the pandemic.
Yes.
All right, further discussion, Alderman Dillard?
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to do the math quick enough in my head, if we've got 73,000 budgeted, and it's a 65, I mean, 35% of the, the match will come from the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's about the right number in here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard, any further discussion? You know, my, my question is, uh, when, when is it determined that they would begin?
And. Well, that is the caveat with material prices going down, delivery times are, are taking longer. So, once, you know, the board has approved this, and we do take it before archives and history, which we've already had discussions, we'll bring a contract for signature and issue a notice to proceed. But again, it's based on when they can get the materials in.
Any estimation of when they might? Uh, any estimation of how long the process is going to take?
Yes, 120 days up to, that's what it does, because again, we're having that issue with materials.
Very likely, the bulk of this expense will not occur during this budget year.
Most likely, that is correct, yes.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, one more question to the city clerk, now I'm looking at zero, zero, one, zero, zero, which is a revenue, did you say three, four, four, or?
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five.
Yes.
I'm looking at the, you came up with 70,000, but I'm looking at zeros across the board here on page two.
Right. This is proposed, Mr. Dillard, he proposed at the last board meeting.
We have monies budgeted during the current fiscal year for this project, and we also.
Where are the monies currently for this current?
I don't get that, Mr. Dillard.
Well, you ought to take the time to find out.
I don't receive it.
Um, Ma- Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Will help us with that answer.
We've only spent so far, Mr. Mayor, for professional services, and then on the docket today for John Reed for red abatement. That's all we've expended roughly, I'll say, 20,000, rounded.
And I think the question is for the city clerk, where is that 70,000 appearing in the?
I just read him the number at the fiscal year.
It's not on the budget status report, I think, is the point.
This is James's proposed, F, like, 22.
We do have money in the current fiscal year, though.
You keep saying we do, but.
Yes, it should be still three, four, five.
Till it shows up in a bank statement or one of these budget reports, it doesn't exist. Unless you got it in a coffee table on your desk.
No, I do not. I mean, it is budgeted, board passed motion last year for this, and we have been expending monies too.
But it's got to show up in one of these.
I don't disagree with you on that, I don't have that.
I know we budgeted for it, I don't know why it's not showing on this budget status report. But we don't need to get bogged down at this time. We, I know we budgeted for it, but Mr. Dillard is right, it's not showing up on the, uh,
It's not.
Budget status report. So, we've got to see why, why it's not. In the meantime, any further discussion or questions?
All questions.
Uh, the question has been called. Do I have a second to the question? We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. While Madam Clerk is looking for that, Mr. Johnson, next item.
Uh, receiving of bids for the Gloucester Court, MLK, and Natchez Love EWP's. Bids were received at 10:00 AM in the clerk's office Tuesday morning, with two bids being received. They're summarized on your report, Thebold Construction 551-838, G. Rayborn Contracting 569-376. It is the recommendation of the city's consulting engineer, J.K.S., to accept the low bid at Thebold Construction, and for the mayor to sign the notice of award, um, and construction contract. And these monies, again, have been budgeted as well, and based on the construction, uh, bid received, the estimated local match is just under 100,000.
So, move.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall, do we have a second? A second by Alderwoman Irving. I'd like for us to explain again exactly where this is to take place, so everyone will understand.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Doll, if he doesn't mind. I mean, he's more on the onside, but we've got three on, on Gloucester Courts, I know Ms. Hall has spoken about several times, and then the last, we got three on the Bluff area, in, in MLK.
All right, 1208 MLK is in the vicinity of the Junior Food Mart there. On out where, the, the evidence of that is very visible, and Alderman Fraser has brought mention to that area in some previous meetings, and I'm very glad that area is being addressed. So, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Dillard.
Is this the scope of work to address concerns with erosion, or road failure, or drainage, or what, what, what is the scope of work?
These are erosion projects.
Erosion projects.
Yes, sir.
And once again, just for the record, I'm going to ask the question, that if it's budgeted, do we know where this 100,000 is budgeted?
This is capital improvements, that is 301.
103, or 301.
301.
I think it's 302, Jane.
And that, you know, and we have monies, you know, proposals carrying forward as well, in the budget report I submitted, back on July 13th.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Alderman Dillard.
I do have, I'm sorry.
Thank you, any further discussion? Anyone else?
James, you know, when they go get the most right.
Alderman Fraser?
Probably a few weeks, probably a few weeks.
All right, when will they start?
Probably a few weeks.
A few weeks, okay. And we'll call for the question?
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries.
I do have another item, a last minute addition, I've changed my report three times this morning, and y'all did not get the latest, because I'd already, you know, put on the desk, and the board meeting had started, at least the finance had. The announcement for the 2021 Transportation Alternative Program came out the other day, and I just got it on my desk this morning about 9:20. Staff was notified late morning that MDOT was again being, would be accepting TAP applications until the close of business September 30th, 2021. This past year, staff prepared, and the city of Natchez submitted for funding consideration, bringing the sidewalks along the 100 block of North Commerce Street to current ADA standards, envisioning to incorporating new aesthetic light poles to provide both safety to pedestrians and vehicular traffic while improving the handicap ramp access at the eight corners of the two intersections. Staff recently received an updated cost estimate from my consulting engineers, that was included in my FY21-22 budget request to the board. The provided budget, project budget totals to 520 and some change, with the local match being 134, 202, 50 cents. With this said, staff can bring the board at its next meeting the required resolutions, needing board approval, and in the interim, if the board allows, to allow staff to start working on this grant application. I do want to point out as well, and it does say this on page five of the guidelines, that the FY20 audit will need to be submitted with the application by 9:30, 21.
Yes, and I will, and I have good news there, our auditors have assured us that the audit will be ready by mid-September. And that is unheard of, the city will have completed three audits in one calendar year. Yeah, that's, that's really amazing. I actually want to address, we have had, you know, uh, people on Facebook trying to beat us up over this, and I think rather than beat us up for the fact that we, uh, the city was behind on this audit a year ago, people need to be, uh, clapping like we just did. Three audits in one year is unheard of. And, uh, speaking to a representative state auditor on the coast just two weeks ago, they, uh, they just couldn't say enough. And, uh, about the progress that the city of Natchez has been, has made. So, we have conveyed that to MDOT, uh, to the executive director Brad White, and also, uh, to our commissioner and, and others, and they are very pleased, and they look forward to our application for this TAP program.
If you're wondering what those photos are, in case there were questions about the add alternates, I had provided some photographs for the board, uh, but you can see with those few photographs, we really need a new roofing system.
Oh, we know that. So, do we need board act? Oh, we know that. So, do we need board action on the TAP? Uh, we, we do want you to-
No, I'm gonna start working on it. My assumption is the board wants to proceed, and I'll bring the documents to the next board meeting, because again, this was nine thirty this morning I was doing this.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you do a good job for us. We appreciate it.
I, I, I just have a question.
Yes, Alderman.
And it's not pertaining to his presentation, but I just wanted to ask, this morning in the news, I was listening to the news this morning, I heard Jackson had gotten blank money and had over three million dollars over a period of time, and I was just gonna ask, is there, is that recent money that they've applied for?
I don't think it's recent money, uh, Ms. Irving. I do have two emails into two different agencies to try and get some feedback, but I don't think that's recent money. My assumption is it was that treasury monies that we had looked at several years back. That's my assumption. I have two emails outstanding right now. One to the Home Corp., and one to MDI.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, we'll go back now. Uh, Mr. Dollar, I don't know that any report is needed on the crepe myrtles. I will say, I spoke to Mr. Sego this morning about the crepe myrtles, and, uh, I understand that some more review is needed, some questions. And Alderman Irving, you may notice I had tried to call you earlier, this morning, right before the meeting.
Just saw that here.
And I know you were on your way to our finance meeting, but I think it's a good idea. We, we already have a number of items we'd like to discuss pertaining to public works or streets, and this is an item that we could discuss as well, and then come back with a, a recommendation to the board, and, uh, make sure that this is done. Uh, but rather than rush into something, I think it's important for us to have a meeting of that street committee.
I think so, too.
And, and make sure we look into it. I do have good news. Uh, we, we are going to have the funds to treat the crepe myrtles. Uh, the city of Natchez, uh, received a refund on our work comp insurance, and that because our employee count was actually less at the audit than it was at the beginning of the year. And so that refund, uh, will more than cover the cost of treating our crepe myrtles. So that's good news. That's good news. Um, and included in that refund is also any excess money that we needed. We pledged at the beginning of the year that we were going to finish the, uh, lighting and landscaping at the Proud to Take a Stand Monument, and that check will cover that as well. That check is just shy of twenty thousand dollars. I just wanted y'all to all know about it, um, and, and to make that public.
Well, thank you, Mayor, because that was one of the questions I had in my report, was when were we looking at finishing the project with the project?
Yeah, we are about to get it done. Uh, we, we're very close, and Mr. Purnell's been working very hard on that. All right. Um, so, with that said, Mr. Dollar, do you have anything else to report? No. All right. I, I just wanna say again, as we've said in previous meetings, Mr. Dollar, your department with short staff, with a fraction of the prisoner help you used to get pre-COVID, you're doing so much, and we appreciate it. And, uh, we've seen these sidewalks, we've seen overlays, we've seen, uh, so many things done, just simple things that still take a lot of time, just like, uh, up there in North, uh, Port Town near Daisy Street, where you cleaned out a ditch, you got, uh, debris out of the way. You know, Bluebird. Where we've been going lately, uh, Mr. Dollar, whenever we call you, you're there. I know you respond so well to the Alderman, Alderwomen, to, uh, Alderman Irving just recently. Uh, so many good reports there. So thank you for all you do.
Absolutely.
Chief Daughtry, are you on the line? And we're glad to see, uh, Lieutenant Jones is here. Lieutenant Justin Jones?
Yes, sir.
He is on the line. Okay. All right. Chief Daughtry, we're gonna recognize you at this time.
Okay, Mayor and Board. Uh, Lieutenant Jones is there in case there was some kind of technical difficulties. I know we have three items on the agenda. Uh, one of the items on the agenda is, uh, and I, I'm gonna take full responsibility for it, uh, is the fact that when we purchased our vehicles, there are two things we didn't look into, and one of them is, uh, the purchase of radios for the vehicles, as well as radars for those vehicles. Uh, those are the two items that we did not look into, and, 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 like I said, I have to take full responsibility, but I dropped the ball on that. Uh, the radars are looking at about twelve hundred per unit, and that's, uh, for eight cars, and the radios are right at twenty-four hundred per unit, including installation, per car.
Okay. Uh, we have a question from Alderman Smith.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Chief, with the, uh, radars and all from the cars that were not in use anymore, do we have any of those, were they removed? Do we have those? Because we had just gotten-
We do, ma'am. We have. We have three that we have, but we're not sure those are gonna be the ones that we're gonna be able to encrypt in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Dillard?
I suggest this and a lot of other discussions be taken under full scrutiny when our budgets are being developed for this coming fiscal year. Uh, you know, we're, right now, we're spending money from, from one end to the other, and there will become a time where, you know, we're going to spend more than we take in. And, and I, I, I just think that these kind of requests that are just being ad hoc, we're thrown into these, these, um, uh, meetings, where you can't, almost can't say no. Now, we can't have a police car out there without a radio or without a, a radar, but it's somewhere, somebody, we're gonna have to figure out where the paper, and I know the City Clerk agrees with me on this, because she's gonna be the one that's gonna have to put the ga- uh, budget and tell somebody no somewhere along the line.
This is my question. Uh, Alderman Dillard, very, points very well taken. Uh, I will ask, is this in the current budget for the chief of police, for the police department?
Oh, yes. So we can find it in his current budget. It won't be from the line item that he has designated, designated for, but there are line items that have funds that we can use for these radios.
What that means is, is that if they're, they're un, if they're items that he didn't expend monies on, but I go back to Alderman Smith's, I know we just got to the wind system and spent a tremendous amount of money getting up to the Winston. Either we've got eight more vehicles in our fleet than we had before, which would not have those radios, or something happened to the other, uh, radios, and I don't even know about the radars, that, that came out of those cars.
I would, I would suggest.
Well, can I, can I answer your question?
Yes, Chief Daughtry.
Can I answer that question from Alderman Dillard?
Yes.
Alderman Dillard, one, about the radars, some of those radars in those vehicles that were damaged in, uh, in collisions. Uh, first of all, these are Durango's, and those are gonna be, uh, those were damaged. And then we also have the difference between a Charger and a Durango. A couple of the radios that were in vehicles that were damaged due to collisions are not working, and the rest of them are not, they were not adequate enough to do what we're planning on doing in the future with the encryption. These radios are not eligible for encryption.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall.
I, I concur with, um, Alderman Irving, Alderman Smith, and Mr. Dillard, because we have purchased radios. We, we have purchased these.
What I would suggest-
But, but I also understand that safety is of utmost importance, but we can't continue to allow, at each meeting, uh, items to be, but, to be requested.
What I would suggest, uh, and, and I'll recognize, uh, Alderman Davis in a minute, and then Alderman Irving, but we could refer this to our police committee and let them, uh, have more conversation on it.
Yeah.
Alderman Davis, do you have anything to add?
From what the chief's saying, the radios he's trying to get, they need to be encrypted, because if they, uh, if they don't get encrypted, everybody in the community can hear you.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But it's in this budget that he can get those.
And we did approve that purchase.
Right, we did.
We did approve that purchase.
We already did.
Uh, in the interest of time and to make sure the board is, uh, properly informed, we'll ask that this be brought up before our police committee in the very near future. Chief Daughtry? We'll get that done, and hopefully have something ready by next meeting, so we can have more understanding. Okay. Uh, Mr., let's see, Chief Daughtry, your next item.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, you never need to come in.
I'm so sorry. I thought, Alderman Irving? Chief Daughtry, if you'll hold just a second. Alderman Irving?
What I want to say is, is just what Mr. Edmond said, we gotta update equipment. And so technology become obsolete really soon. It doesn't matter the, the amount of time that we purchase, it's what is needed. So we need to consider that, and we're tabling it, so it'll come to the committee, but that's something we really have to look at as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. All right. Uh, Chief, next item.
And, uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I want the board to understand, when I, when I ask for things, I'm not asking for things that it just, oh, they look good or whatever. We're going through inventory of a lot of equipment that we have, that, that has not been updated in years, and a lot of it, like, with technology, is outdated. I'm just, you know, so I understand the way finances work, and, and we're willing to, I thank Ms. Farmer for working with me, finding other options that we can do, which leads me to my next, uh, request. Uh, Ms. Addie Snowball, who came before the board before, uh, I'm asking to go into a contract with her. We have the money in our budget through payroll to break her odds from now to December to help us with some grant funding, and we can possibly get some of this stuff that we can liberate, a lot of these, uh, costs for the city.
I think all of that's good, Chief. I really do, and I totally understand.
Mr. Mayor, is that in this budget?
Ald, Ald-
Is it in the budget?
Alderman Hall has, uh, has asked, is that in your budget, Chief?
Yes, we have a commander's spot that's not being filled, uh, because he, uh, is no longer there, he retired, and that money is in the budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We just don't have a figure per month. What are you talking about contracting with her?
I'm sorry?
There's no figure on here for us to consider?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. The contract, the contract was forwarded, I forwarded to the mayor's office, because she had sent it to me, and by me, I know I cannot enter it without board approval. It had to be the mayor and the board, so it was sent to his office, but it's thirty-five hundred a month.
The, the idea being that, uh, this will more than pay for itself between now and December thirty-first, and, uh, this is, uh, the individual, I believe, Alderman Irving, that you had brought to us?
I did, but she-
And I have knowledge of her as well?
Right.
Yes?
I was just gonna say, she never came to present her, um, information, but we have discussed this information with Chief, and I do agree, you know, she's, it's needed. I didn't ever see a price, but I think she would be an asset to bring extra funding in to the police department. So we need to make a motion. I will make a motion on that, or Sarah.
Oh, um, do, before we continue, I do need a motion. If we're going to continue with this discussion.
Okay, okay. How many months, Mr. Mayor?
And, uh, so the months are, uh, this will be starting September, October, November, December, or either four, three or four, depending on when you start.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement for four months to give this, um, a try, because I do think there is a lot of opportunity out there. I've heard that from other cities, so.
Okay. All right. Um, the motion's been made by Alderman Smith. Uh, who seconded it?
Edmond.
Okay. Alderman Irving has seconded the motion. We'll have further discussion. Will, yes, Mr. Callaway?
Mine's brief. Can we amend that to allow me to look at this contract before we?
Of course. That's a given, yeah.
Okay. Great. Uh, pending approval by the city attorney? We'll ask for the question? Ask for the question, second? All right. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, last item on the agenda, Chief, uh, we're going to discuss the animal control officer. It, uh, do you have any reports for us on that position?
Mayor, I, I want everyone to know that, uh, our officers have, have stepped up and have started. They are assisting in animal control calls that we're stepping on, that we are getting. Uh, we've been, the last couple of weeks, we've got cows running through, uh, the city. We've got, uh, squirrels out of houses, snakes out of houses as well. So I, I wanna thank the men and women for stepping up, because we do have, uh, that vacant position. We are in the process of looking at, uh, and talking with board members, and also with you, Mayor, as far as putting a certified officer in that position. We're currently looking at the equipment that's gonna be needed. Now, I know you're gonna say, here he, here he goes, asking stuff again, but all we have is a, is a, is a truck. You know, uh, the officers that caught, stepped a couple of while back, they, they use, uh, they're pretty much their hands. So their, their equipment that we are gonna need, snake wrappers, we're gonna need cages, uh, to transport these animals in, uh, that we're gonna need, and we're in the process of getting those bids and getting those understandings, so we can get it to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hall?
I applaud our officers for pitching in and helping in this position, but we need a full-time person in this position.
Absolutely.
You gotta get the manpower first.
Well, isn't it something-
I, um, I'm gonna ask you to be recognized. Uh, I'm recognizing Alderman Davis at this time? Alderman Davis?
You're talking about getting full time, you gotta get the manpower first, and always put somebody in that position.
But if he can't find somebody in his department-
Alderman Hall?
Yes, sir. If, if Chief Da- Chief Daughtry cannot find someone in his department who is certified to do this, we need to find elsewhere. This needs to be a full-time position.
It does. I agree.
If he's a full-time position, that why, he, he's a department here, we leaving on him, so he can make, find that solution.
Alderman Irving?
Was it advertised, the position advertised to the public for?
I, I can answer this. It, at first it was, and then that was withdrawn, because our strategy was to move a, uh, certified officer in that position, because our, our research indicates that a certified officer is better able to enforce the animal control ordinances than, uh, an individual who is not a certified officer. Uh, but we have run into difficulty there because of some staffing shortages at the police department. Uh, I think everyone knows we're having staffing shortages in our public works, police, fire, at Natchez Transit, and we really need people to apply for these positions. The good news is, uh, Chief, tell me if I'm right, I believe we just found five new hires, or maybe six? This past week?
Well, it might even be seven, Mayor. We got two more applications in, uh, for certified officers, but we did hire two certified officers, one from Kansas, uh, and one from the Jackson area, and we hired three, uh, locals who have been, uh, one young man has been trying to be a police officer for the last four years. He never quit, he kept taking the test, and he finally passed, uh, and they've all been before civil service. So that'll be three, uh, coming on board, along with the two certified officers that are coming on board, with two additional certified applications that are in the file as we speak. I, I, you know, and, and I know board members, I know you get a lot of calls, uh, from your constituents, I, I know you do. I don't want you to think that your, your request of not being unheard. We're doing the best that we can. We really are. And, and, you know, I look in the men and women's eyes, they're trying all, all hours of the day and night, trying to make sure to think, I could you please be patient with them? Give them, you know, have them call us. A lot of these calls we're not getting, but we're gonna do the best that we can with the manpower that we have. And I, I, the turn is, it's turning around. I, I, I can see it coming. You know, uh, we just, we just need a little more patience, and, and we're gonna get there. But I agree with Alderman Hall, that job is a full-time position. At just the same page, I think Alderman Hall and I talked about this, by that being a certified officer, that way, that, that officer, while he's out on duty, if another officer needed backup for, for whatever reason, he can back that officer up, but then he also has the full powers to enforce, uh, the city ordinances and stuff to that nature. That's one of the reasons why we were looking at a certified officer position. Correct, Alderman Hall?
Absolutely, but we still need a full-time person. I understand what you're saying. We've had that conversation.
I'm going to call on Alderman Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm recognizing Alderman Smith.
Oh, I didn't really-
I thought you had your hand up. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. At this point, then, this is what I would suggest, uh, with the good news about new hires, uh, that will allow us to assess the situation, should have much better needs to report in just a couple of weeks. Uh, I think it is very important that we, uh, do have that full-time officer assigned to this duty as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
Let me say this. Uh, in the history of the police department, the, uh, dog, the, uh, animal control also always have been a civilian. And I understand what the chief's saying, what he's thinking. Uh, most, it gonna be hard to find a police officer who really, who really wants to do their job, because, uh, most of them sign on to be a police officer, not to be an animal control officer. So it gonna be a hard pill for the board to even find an officer. And Chief, I, I wish you the best of luck if you can find a police officer who, that wanna do their job. And I understand the gist about him having the power to do, to do other things, it will, like, say, in a- It will like say, in a city of this size, you could probably could do it in Jackson or somewhere else. But in a city of this size, it's gonna be hard because, as I said earlier, most of the, the guys that sign on wants to be a police officer, not a animal control officer, or either what most people gonna call a dog catcher. So that's, that's just, that's just, I'm just gonna be honest with you. So as I said, I wish you the best of luck, Chief. If you can find a sworn officer who wanna do that, so, so be it. It, it gonna have to be a one who gonna be real dedicated and courageous to do that because you're dealing with these animals and, and some of these animals are daily, I mean, violent animals and stuff. You got, it's just like dealing with people on the street. So it, it, it's, it gonna be rough.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Uh, yes, Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to revisit quickly, um, about the approval to contract with this grant writer. I, but I want us to approve the final contract that Mr. Calloway puts together at the next meeting.
Right.
To make sure that's clear.
Oh, sure, sure. And, and, uh, yes, Alderman Fraser?
Back to what, what she said. I didn't, I was just sitting here listening. Uh, I think Chief, as you said, he got it in his budget. He lost someone. And if I'm not mistaken, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that person, that grant writer shouldn't go forty-four thousand dollars a year, correct?
Yes.
So it should be in the range of, of, of below forty-four thousand and below, correct? That was, that was-
Correct, yes, sir.
Through December.
Okay, that, okay. It's just one, three months. So we should be, we should be confident with that, if we can get one.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser.
Four months.
Uh, only four months at thirty-five hundred per month, and then we'll see what, uh-
So that's where the money at, we gotta make it.
Yes. Thank you. Any further dis- uh, discussion for the chief of police? I believe this will about conclude your report. Am I correct? Chief? All right, all right, Lieutenant Jones. We will now move on. Thank you so much. Ms. Bartley? You've been patiently waiting.
No problem. I have a report today, and, uh, I'd like to also make note of a correction on your agenda. It, it, I omitted the word adult daycare. So I will have to add, that is to be added in to, it's on the report that, that I gave to you on this little sheet, little shot, but the agenda has, it omitted the word adult daycare.
Okay.
So the city clerk does have the correct wording.
All right, any?
We received notice, uh, a few, uh, a little over two weeks ago that the request for proposals have been, uh, have been published for adult, for senior services in Adams County and other counties that cover the southwest Mississippi area as indicated by Southwest Planning and Development District area on aging. So for the last almost, uh, thirty, thirty-six or thirty-eight years, the Natchez Senior Center has been the provider of these senior services in this particular area. We endeavor to do so. So I am requesting authorization to submit proposals to Southwest Mississippi Planning and Development District area on aging for consideration of funding for the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five fiscal years to provide senior center activities, home-delivered meals, congregant meals, adult daycare, and senior transportation. That is my request.
So moved.
Sir, all right, motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Discussion on the motion. We'll call for the question.
Call, second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next item, Ms. Bartley.
Thank you. That takes care of the Natchez Senior Center. The Natchez Transit System. We have identified six vehicles that are currently broken or unusable. We want to remove these vehicles from inventory and they are sold on our, uh, on the dot gov website that the city uses and Public Works that we all use. And that those, uh, as usual, the proceeds from that sale go back into the Natchez Transit, uh, budget line items within the city for future capital purchases. Of these six vehicles, all of them are between the ages of eleven and fifteen years old and have, uh, numerous, uh, mileages or quarter of a million miles or in, in, and around that area. And we have, uh, found out that the total amount to refurbish them will be north of the tune of fifty-five thousand dollars. We feel that that's too much money to invest in old pro, in older vehicles. And also, they're on the insurance, fully on the insurance right now, which we need to take these off as well. So my request is today is that you would allow us to declare these six vehicles as broken or unusable. Remove them from the city inventory and, uh, so that they can be sold. Once we do this, then we will petition the state of Mississippi for their, uh, titles because the, the state of Mississippi holds their titles. And from that, then we, they would be auctioned off. And then that also that the proceeds from the sale would go back to Natchez Transit, uh, into the city budget for Natchez Transit for future capital purchases. And so that is my request on, for Natchez Transit System.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Alderwo, Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Hall, Alderwoman Irving. I, I skipped breakfast this morning and I'm starting to feel it, right? Most important meal of the day. Well, uh, discussion on the motion. Uh, we will call for the question.
Second.
We'll now proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley. Uh, Ms. Bartley, I will just state for the public to know that you have some great jobs available for drivers uh, wanting to get our trolleys going again, our shuttles, uh, so that service can be restored to under the hill for our cruise boats. But we need applicants, and so if anyone wants a good job, hey, check out the Natchez website. Ms. Caroline Deason has been doing a great job getting the information out there on various platforms. And the city is participating in a job fair tomorrow at the, uh, uh, Convention Center in Vidalia. And we also have a City of Natchez, uh, uh, event coming up in September on the ninth at the Natchez Convention Center. Uh, so we have, uh, two job fairs coming up, one tomorrow, one on the ninth. If anyone needs a job, there's no excuse not to have one. Chandler Russ in a meeting just yesterday reported to us that at these job fairs, uh, very likely the number of employers represented, the number of jobs being offered, the number of available jobs may very well be around six hundred right now in our area. That's hard to imagine, but we have, as you know, uh, had a lot of economic growth, and so there are opportunities for everyone. All right. We now, uh, will invite the city officials' reports. Uh, we will call first on Alderwoman Hall.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. I would like to gladly report that, uh, Marblestone Road looks wonderful. It is now a two different, uh, a two-way street, completely looks different. All the drainage curves, it, it, they aren't completely finished, but it is a tremendous, tremendous improvement to that area. And they've also started, um, Brownfield subdivision. This past weekend, the-
I, I, I want to pause just a minute. How long have we been waiting for Marblestone to be completed?
Many, many, many moons.
Many years.
So let's not just gloss over that. That's a big deal.
Absolutely. I would just like to make sure everyone knows that we have to give credit to the former Alder Person Award one, which was Arsenal, um, Alderwoman Arsenal, George Arsenal Matthews.
Yeah.
Because she brought that twelve million dollars here to Natchez. And so that project is come to fruition today because of that, and I don't just want that immediate. So it's been a long time. It's twenty years.
It's been a long time coming, and we're excited that it's, that it's happening.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hall?
I'd like to continue my report, thank you. Uh, the Norman Puckett Go, Go Junior Golf Tournament ended this weekend. It was well attended. Uh, in fact, the two daughters of Mr. Puckett volunteered their time this weekend for that tournament. Also, a high school coach from McComb told his golf team that in order for them to be on his golf team, they would have to play Duncan Park. So that's, excuse me, a tribute to our, uh, Mr. Brooking and his employees in Duncan Park. And I would not like to, um, remind the public also that the old Providence Road Bridge has received approval by this board for repair.
Okay. Thank you. Does that conclude your-
Yes, sir. And I would like to state that, um, I'm thankful to Mr. Johnston and all of the engineers and the construct, the construction workers and contractors that are working on Marblestone Road and Brown subdivision. This started, um, a year ago, August, and we're very grateful to them. And they are, are on target to complete this year.
Thank you. I, I want to add one thing too that I think Mayor's mentioning. Uh, you brought to me a very good report, and that report is for consideration of improvements on an area of West Ears Lane as a result of our meeting at the request of Reverend Hunt at his church there on West Ears Lane, where you, I, I was there, Alderman Fraser was there, uh, and members of the city departments, directors, and, and so on. So I, I'm looking forward to that project, uh, getting done, and there is a possibility that, you know, some federal funding will be available for that.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your work. Let's not let that drop.
Yes, Mayor, and I would ask and inquire, what about the, um, Concord Drainage Project?
Why don't we wait until we get to your report, and then we'll go there?
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I do want to mention that as well.
Okay.
Uh, Alderman Fraser, your report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, I li, I would like to thank Ms. Ms. Miller again for that excellent report that she brought in, and I appreciate it, as I say earlier. Also, Mr. Mayor, I was kinda like, uh, a little upset, but I'm glad it came to the forefront and you did my, my announcement. Now, I also would like to thank, well, you hired Ms. Francis Wallace. It was, I didn't know anything about it. Like you say, you stated earlier that it was, we were doing so much, it was oversight, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that.
Hey, hey, give her a hand.
So thank you very much. We're grateful for it, for it, Francis.
And Alderman Fraser, I want to apologize to you in all of our busyness the past couple of weeks. Uh, you and I have not had that conversation, so I, I apologize.
We should have. The street commited to.
I apologize to you about that.
Uh, uh, and, and I would like, also would like to piggyback on, on Ms. Ms. Alderman, Ms. Ms. White, I mean, Ms. Hall, I'm sorry. Ms. Hall, I would like to say that, uh, you need to go to Marblestone and look. I mean, Marblestone now, it really truly look like a subdivision. It also look that if you want to buy a piece of property in Marblestone, go out there and buy it because they did an excellent job. Now, the other day, also yesterday, I had one of my constituents to call me about Daisy Street. Daisy Street and I know that street. She was complaining about the construction company, that the street done got smaller. So I went there, went over there and looked, and the guys, the, the cruise guys was doing all the work, the guys, they was busy. And I stopped and talked to the foreman, and I was asking the foreman, but if you don't know, you don't know. So I asked the foreman, I said, my, my constituent here said that street is getting smaller, it makes small. He said, no, 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 it's not getting smaller, Alderman Fraser. He said, look at here, here's the curb right here. So the curb was sitting out, almost out in the street. He said, when we pave it, it gonna come up and it gonna be even. The street gonna be the same length. I said, oh, I said, I didn't know. So I thanked him for that. So I explained it to my constituent girl and complained to her, and she said, oh, okay. So I'm satisfied. So that was one issue that, uh, that was addressed, and as I say, the same construction company that's doing Marblestone is doing, is doing, uh, uh, Daisy Street and over that area. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm also glad that, uh, you brought up, uh, in Jane, about, over there on Georgia West, right in that, by the, uh, the stadium, that twelve is twelve, there is twelve something.
Yes, sir.
Down there, and they're getting ready to do some work down there, which is, it's been solely, uh, needed because Mr. Bowser and the peoples in Mayfair have been complaining about that for years and years. So we're gonna take care of that, and, and I said, I want to appreciate that too. Uh, early this morning, I had, uh, a pastor Leroy White called me about a problem that they're having up there on Phillips Lane, up behind Mr. Mo's, who was off of Martin Luther King. They're trying to get some kind of assistance up there because a lot of those houses up there are starting erosion, they have a lot of erosion. So I'll be getting back with the board, or he'll be getting back. He had someone, I got to go and talk to him today, finish talking to him. They had someone up there looking at that. That's on Phillips Lane, and, uh, that's the issue I, I need to take here. Now, my last and, and, and final thing that I would like to-
Alderman, before we go any further, um, Ms. Francis, would you make a note of what he was just talking and make sure I, I know fully about it, um, uh, any, anything that we need?
Behind Mr. Mo's Woods Garage of Martin Luther King.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, when we get to your report, or you want-
I want to comment. It's in my ward, so could I be included as well? Phillips Lane is in my ward.
Oh, sure, sure.
That's the only thing I was gonna ask. Could I be a part of that?
Sure. Alderman Fraser, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Also, also, I was, I was sitting here, uh, uh, listening at the, uh, the, the peoples from the film festival that is, we're gonna have an event in November, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Only thing I would like to say about that, we're gonna have an event, I hope it can go off, but we're, the city's planning on giving it, but we just hope COVID don't get into worse, that we can be able to pull this off. As you know, and the mayor expounded on this earlier, this, uh, this is getting worse and worse. It's not just affecting the older people, it's affecting the younger people, the younger kids. And I have a great concern because I have a granddaughter that's under the age, she's no more than eight or nine years old, and we're gonna start going back to school. As the mayor said, also said, there's so much diversity going on, and so much misled information is being put out to the community that people now don't know which way to go. But the main thing is make sure that each and every individual is vaccinated. They might not want, they might not want to get vaccinated, but we need that. That is the only way we are going to be in this community. That is the only way that we are going to be able to stay open. We want to survive, but we can't survive if everyone is sick. We don't have any hospitals. The reporter, the reporter this morning, on CNN News, Mississippi don't have any more COVID beds than major hospitals. We in dire need, people. And the thing, you go out to, you go out to local hospitals, they're turning our citizens away. They don't have any beds. But we're taking this for granted. We are playing. This is not a playing thing. This is about community. And the only way Natchez is gonna survive is that we come together and take that shot. If, if you got a family member, take that shot, you say, look, you need, don't come over here. Play at your own house. I don't need you over here. 'Cause I have, truly, I have family members now that's sick. Some of them are sick. But they can't come to my house. So, Mr. Mayor, that is the end of my report, so thank you, and, uh, everyone, make sure you get vaccinated.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Well, well said. Alderwoman Smith?
Amen to that, Fraser. Fraser, uh, that vaccination thing can be what just helps us continue on the path we're on. And that's a path for more sales tax, more park renewals, and all the things that we need people coming here and visiting here. And we need locals to out shopping and spending money as well. So that being said, I do want to say I had the privilege to attend, uh, this week, the Natchez Senior Citizen Center grand reopening. And I want to compliment Ms. Bartley on a very safe environment. She had plexiglass with the tables, they were social distanced. Um, and they were very, very happy to be there again, and it was really fun to see their excitement. And so I was there, and Alder, Alderwoman Hall came too as well. And, um, Ms. Bartley initiated some really good dialogue with our senior citizens that attended. And I want to say how engaged they were, how much they knew of what was going on in Natchez, and I'm just appreciative of that. But one of the things I did want to bring out that, that was brought up was a stop sign on Triumph Lane that, that has been overturned. But one of the things I did want to bring out that, that was brought up was a stop sign on Triumph Lane that, that has been overturned, pushed down some, something. Um, if we can check on that, um, stop sign and see if we can pick that up. And this is, it might be an, an outside conversation, but I will just initiate it. Um, there are some folks whose family members can't be seen by home health because of the area, um, and the danger. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do to help with our police department. I might get some people the care they need from their home health department. So that's something that we can check on as well.
I'll give you the name, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give that after the fact. Um, so anyway, thank you, Ms. Bartley, for that. And I would just wish y'all continued success with, with your activities and I'm so happy that they're back in session. Um, just secondly, I attended Appliances &amp; More, which is a new business that opened in the old Western Auto. And, um, they've got wonderful appliances. Uh, you know, if anybody is in, in need of anything, you might want to stop by and check that out too. So congratulations to them on their business, um, opening and ribbon cutting. And I think that's about it. Just like, like I said, everybody say, please, get vaccinated. I have and my family has.
Thank you, Alder Woman Smith. Thank you for that report. Alder Woman Irving?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I want to begin with, uh, and I want this reported in the minutes. I wanted to reflect my true voting strength. I want, um, I was given information that was false information. And so I want to change my vote from the previous meeting from a yes to a no. And even though that person is not coming to work with us, I want to change my vote from yes to hire that person to no. I want it to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
Want to begin with that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I don't know if we can do that.
We can. I have it here. I have information here. And, um, let me find it. It said, a member of the board wishes to change their vote from the previous meeting. How should that be handled? The minutes of the previous meeting should not be changed. A new motion and vote on the matter should be taken at the next meeting. And that's, I have here.
Okay. Um, we would have to have a nu, a new motion?
For her vote, please.
For her removal, um, to change her vote?
And so I can't be the per?
I'm, I'm sorry, this is new ground for me. I've never dealt with this before.
Do she need a second?
But if we, uh?
It, it has, I can't do it. It has to be the person who made the motion or, um, second, one or the other. But I want to change my vote.
Okay. So the person who made the motion?
Well.
Or seconded?
Our attorney should be able to tell us that because that goes back to receiving.
This is, I, I wish we had known, we could have properly researched this matter before now. Being that this is the first we've heard about it, I, I must confess, I don't know the proper procedure.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
But I'm willing, you know, to follow any po, proper procedure.
Mr. Mayor, if, if we have a procedure, uh, if she need to change her vote, she need a second. Uh, can we, uh, uh, can, Mr. Attorney, you, you can look into that and if, if so, she need a second, I'll make a second, but, uh?
We need to look into it?
She can, uh, table it.
Mr. Calloway? Ground of all the times I've been through this, this meeting and other meetings involving rules of procedure, I don't see a harm or a foul because the person was not hired. If there was reliance upon the vote, it would be a different thing. If she wants to make the motion to change, let the record reflect, she's changed her motion in the last meeting as to the hiring of the director, I do not see harm in that or I can sit here and study these rules.
This is what I'd like to do in the interest of time. Uh, we would, uh, out of respect to Alder Woman Irving's request, I would like for our city attorney to, I would like first for the minutes to note that she has made this request and for the city attorney to be given time to, uh, report back to us on what the proper protocol should be, if any. And, and that's what we'll do. We, we, we can be expected to make the decision right now because we don't know.
Right, but that's.
Uh, but Alder Woman Irving will certainly look into it. Next item on your report?
Okay, then I want to, um, talk about the cleanup, the litter that I, as I've just discussed in that area, Mayor, that we possibly could get containers. I know we have the park there and maybe it could be containers placed outside because that is an area, South Concord, that is heavily littered.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, yes, Alder Woman.
I, I'm, I just, I mean, how can we do that in one, one str, I mean, I just don't know. Litter is all over this town. We can't go around putting, people throw your trash in the trash can or put it in your car and take it home. It's just, it's a big problem everywhere.
It is a problem, it is.
And so I don't know how we can start putting it on street corners, you know, just on every street.
Well.
If, are they in the parks?
Well, let's have more conversation on it.
If we could have that conversation in the street committee when the street committee meets.
Yeah, cause I, it is, I mean, I'm totally agreeing with that problem.
Okay, the other thing that I want to, um, ask the board, let's focus more on community gardens, um, so that we could address, um, insecurity of food here in Natchez. So I think that's a great idea with us having, um, have, we have two now. And I want to see increase. Maybe we could look to see in other locations that we could have, um, these community gardens too. As I've just stated, to address food insecurity, um, here in Adams County.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Woman.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, Alderman Davis? I'm sorry, Alder Woman Irving, are you continuing with your report?
I am, I'm finished.
You are, okay. Alderman Davis?
Okay, um, one thing I want to let the committee know, uh, they are putting a new urgent care clinic up on 601 North beside churches. It's supposed to be over seven days a week and, and the process of, uh, construction now. And also, uh, I had, uh, I attended, uh, the Natchez Transit, uh, Rodeo, Rodeo, that they call it, where the, uh, the banquet and, uh, it was nice. Was, was a lot of people when they came, it was nice. We had people from all over the states. And, uh, they enjoyed, they all, they wanted to come back to Natchez. They, they, they prefer to have everything here in Natchez. And that's what we want and that's what we like. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Davis. Uh, Alderman Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot to report. We've got a lot of things going on and it's gonna be time and study to prepare ourselves for the, the upcoming months. But I did note in our packet that the MML will be here, what, August 31st? Is that correct? Uh, if you, if you're in the public and had a chance to stop by and see this, this is, uh, an organization that I, every time I go, I learn something new. And, uh, and a lot of the problems that we have in our community are not just our community. What we have to find is the communities where they've made good advances against the problems that we're dealing with. Whether it be dilated properties or dilapidated houses or litter, uh, food insecurities and, and it's part of our human nature that we can collectively come together and benefit from those associations. So anyhow, you're here in town on the, uh, 31st, I encourage anyone to stop by. I'm sure that, uh, uh, we can get you a guest pass and I think you would be very appreciative of this organization. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dillard. Thank you, everyone. We will now proceed to the city clerk, uh, the approval of claims docket. Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, I'd ask the board to consider approving the claims docket.
Do we have a motion? Motion, motion made by Alder Woman Hall, seconded by Alder, Alderman Frazier. Discussion?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, Alder Woman Irving.
I also found out some more information about me having a family member and being able to vote on the claims docket. So I want to say that I will be again voting on the claims docket, but I will vote on everything with the exception of the fire department budget. Okay? I don't have to recuse myself, but that is what I would do so that I can have my voting powers and comments on that budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alder Woman Irving. Further discussion on the claims docket. We'll call for the question.
Called.
Question has been called. Second, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alder Woman.
Can that be reported in the minutes as well, that I stated that I would be voting on the claims docket?
Yes.
With the exception of the fire department budget?
We'll make sure that that is included in the minutes, the statement made by Alder Woman Irving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, the mini docket?
Thank you, Mayor. Ask the board to consider approving the mini docket.
Motion? Motion made by Alder Woman Hall, seconded by Alderman Frazier. Any discussion on the motion? We will call for the question.
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. The city attorney's report, Mr. Calloway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Alderman and Alder Women. Uh, my first report is, we've been talking about the bond and I'll just update you on the status of that. We have filed the validation proceeding in Chancery Court and that will be heard first part of next week, which will lay the foundation for the closing later next week.
Right. Good news, good news. Uh, next item?
Next item is the fourth interlocal agreement, which I have prepared. Somehow, when, when I look at it, I hope you have the same copy I do, I sent to Ms. Pam earlier this week to put in your boxes instead of that highly redacted and added to version. But this is the interlocal agreement I prepared based upon the information and discussions that I've been a part of, including meeting with the, uh, Board of Aldermen. This sets up a commission to oversee the pool and the soccer facilities. That is the extent of their jurisdiction in this Fourth Amendment of the interlocal agreement. It doesn't involve county parks or other city parks. We're limited to these two. It also keeps the financing, salaries, benefits in the hands of the government authorities, those being the City of Natchez and the Board of Supervisors, so that the, the government authorities are making decisions about what money goes in, who's hired. Essentially, this is a committee to run these two parks based upon what has been provided by these two governing boards. I only know to tell you that I've highlighted and redacted portions, for example, on the third page where it says, a countywide comprehensive recreation program for Adams County. That does not belong in this interlocal agreement. That's what was sent to us by the county and I don't think they meant for that to be in there, but I have redacted those portions. So, uh, if this, if this is approved by this board today, it still has to be approved, subject to the Board of Supervisors approving this. So I, I, I'll answer questions the best I can and I think I have fit into this interlocal, what I've been instructed to, but I, I, at the discretion of the board, of course, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Calloway, thank you. Discussion. I would like to first entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made to approve this interlocal agreement made by Alder Woman Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Woman Smith. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Alder Woman Irving?
Okay. Um, we had it in our packet, but we've never had a, a board discussion on this. Because I'm under the impression, and this is what I do have, is a copy of the recreation, um, um, contra, uh, interlocal agreement. That's what it is, the recreation interlocal agreement. And so it consists of the city, county and the school board. And so here we're omitting and that interlocal agreement does not expire until October 31st, um, 2022. And so that's what's so confusing here. We've, we're having this discussion and it has not been discussed with this entire board.
We're having that discussion now.
But we should be afforded more time. We should be afforded more time because I'm hearing, I talked with county members and I'm hearing, you can't do that. That's illegal. Okay? So I just want to know. I'm, I'm asking. I'm asking.
I, I must say, first of all, um, what are you alleging is illegal that is taking place?
That we can have another contract with the soccer and aquatic center, okay? And we already have a contract that is legal, is a legal binding document. And I brought this up before and that we've said, we don't have a contract. But we had adopted in our minutes, in our previous administration, that interlocal agreement that consisted of the city, the county and the school board. And here we're saying that we're going to exclude, I mean, I, let me find my copy and that way I can see because that's highlighted and Xed out. But most importantly, there has been no discussion on, with this interlocal agreement. None. Now, if it has been?
We're having that discussion now.
But we should be afforded more than five minutes on this, Mayor. This is a legal binding document.
Five minutes applies to public citizens' comments. The board can take whatever action it so desires. If you want to discuss it, if you want to, uh, vote on it, if you want to table it, there are various things the board can do. It is before you though at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Alder Woman Smith?
One of the things I know that we agreed on and we did, because we've done it, um, we got the, uh, the bond on city parks because we've just agreed to have the access to manage our own city parks. That's, we wanted to do that first and foremost and that, we've taken that step. So what the county asked, you know, they wanted to keep going with the pool agreement since we built the pool together. We were, you know, that was the main reason that whole deal came about was to get the pool done. So my, my understanding that they're happy with the fact that we're gonna keep in an interlocal agreement, work with, on the pool and soccer field together, those were all built at that time. And that was, so I, we've all been talking about this when we did the bond. We've been, now we're, we've talked about the other. Um, so I'm not sure, and then I don't know, is, I thought the agreement was, had, um, expired. The other agreement.
Mr. Calloway is?
Do you have a copy, Mr. Calloway?
The current, the current agreement is in force, I think we found out. Is that correct?
There is a document from 2012 that neither the county, the city nor the, the school board were essentially living by those documents. It was voidable. The city announced that it is not gonna abide by the old agreement and voided. The discussion started with the county and this, uh, new interlocal says the parties void the terms of the interlocal agreement entered to on 2012.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to continue that they've had the discussions too. I mean, they've?
They have. And so therefore, the action would not be illegal because in accepting this interlocal agreement, we are making, would be making the decision to void the other. Is that correct?
Uh, it, the city's made it clear that we're gonna manage our parks and the county's made it clear that they're gonna manage their facilities. And this is a compromise just to address the two where we both have financial interests.
That's right. And it also has been determined that, uh, to my knowledge, the school does not desire to be in a partnership on the pool or on the soccer field. That's what's been reported to me.
It, it.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. Where's the representative? Have they been here? Is there a representative that has?
My understanding that, that was, uh, that was discussed many, many months ago. Um, I know that the county has already passed this interlocal agreement. Am I not mistaken? Has the county passed this interlocal agreement or taken it under advisement?
They know it's coming.
They know it's coming, okay.
May, may I clarify, Mr. Mayor? The county sent what they proposed for a Fourth Amendment. And their, their proposal had a lot of old terms like maintain the county facilities, allow them to submit the, the salaries. I cleaned that language up and that's essentially what I did. And now we're sending it back to the county.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Woman Hall?
If you recall, Mr. Slover and someone else came before the board with the fourth interlocal agreement. That was the old language. Mr. Calloway had never been involved in that process.
That, that is correct.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Ald, Ald, Alder Woman Smith and then Alderman Frazier?
Yeah, and just to, uh, elaborate a little bit more, it had things about buying property and things that they really don't have the authority to do. And I think what, you know, um, their, their county attorney just said, you know, it was done quickly and some of that language is not gonna be taken out as it should have been. So he, he allowed our city attorney the, the, um, opportunity to go ahead and get that language out for the final agreement. So once this, we do this, then it will go there for them to approve.
Alderman Frazier?
Mr. Mayor, uh, and we need to get some kind of clarification. I, who know I'm voiding contract, was the city, the county? But I'm hearing from the attorney. What we need to do is, is, is to get both city attorneys together and, and, and go it on and, and clarify this up because what we're getting is, is confusing information. Because I don't know if the city voided and, and we're going by hearsay, he say, she say, but we don't have any clarification. So, Mr., my suggestion? So, Mr., my suggestions to, is, it's just my suggestions that, Mr. Attorney, you give what's got Sloverly and then y'all can come back, both y'all come back and explain to the full board what's going on. Not just to, uh, oh, you know, just one, but just to everybody and you have to make sure that there won't be no more argument on about who bought the contract, you just come for the whole board.
Okay, Mr. Callaway?
Thank you, uh, again Alderman Frazier. Mr. Slover sent me the first draft where the county was saying, "Let's enter into this new interlocal agreement." Their intention was not to abide by the old interlocal agreement. I took the draft that he sent and clarified it to what I understood it to be and there was some old language in there that needed to be taken out, disregard the spelling and things that he left in haste. So, now, this is us agreeing to what the county essentially sent us. So, they were not going to abide by the other interlocal agreement and, and we agree it should be voided and just limited to soccer and the pool. And this is what, this is our return. They may not, they may want to change some of this language, but we're advancing the ball between the parties. They sent it to us first, we've sent it back with our suggestions. And if they pass it, then we're good. If they don't, then will be the further discussions between the two.
So, in other words- So, in other words, uh, uh, what you did is, is, is that if it didn't benefit the ci, with, on, with, with the city, you took that out, it didn't have anything to do with the city. Like I say, you cleaned it up, right?
I, I cleaned it up, for example, I-
Yeah, give me an example, please.
On page three.
Okay.
Uh, the fourth line down, Mr. Frazier. It, it said, "An oper, operation of a countywide comprehensive recreation program for Adams County." Well, that's not the intention of the interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement's limited to the pool and the soccer facility. So, I struck that language from there. It may, certainly it was clear that it's just limited to the aquatic and soccer fields, uh, the next line down when I took that language out.
Okay, okay, it, what, what really is-
Yes, Alderman Frazier?
To me, what really is confusing, because when they first came with these plans, we had soccer field, we had basketball over by, then we had the count, we had a, a, the, the school board because they were going to build soccer field, uh, basketball over there, the thing. So, now, it's, it's, so, we're just going with just strictly city, right? In that area, over by, over by the school. You're not familiar with that.
The, the basketball?
Yeah.
The soccer fields are, are, are right by the school, correct? We got it from the-
Yeah, but see, they closed, they built a basketball court over there too.
I'm, I'm going to say in-
So, they were saying all it was in the agreement.
In, in interest of time, uh, you know, I have no problem, uh, if the board wants to take this under advisement. I, I will say this, just for clarification. This agreement, we have discussed thoroughly with, at the time, this, this process started when Ricky Green was still president of the Board of Supervisors and he and I have continued to talk about it. And he understands full well, uh, the city's going to handle our parks, they're going to handle their parks. The commission is only going to oversee the pool and the soccer field. Uh, since he became president of the board, President Angela Hutchins and I have continued having those talks. And our recreation committee has had those talks, their, uh, their supervisors have had those talks. So, here it comes. Um, I see if we are doing a bond, if we are indeed taking back our parks, I see no reason to continue in an interlocal agreement that gives a commission full exclusive jurisdiction over all of those facilities. Know the goal has been that those would be under the management of the city, uh, once again. And that is our intention and that's why we, we have done this. I don't think that anyone would expect that the city would pass a $2 million bond issue, spend $2 million on our facilities and hand over that management to a recreation commission that is shared between the city, county, and school board. That makes absolutely no sense. Um, what does make sense is that we are entering a new clean agreement that only pertains to the swimming pool, the soccer field. The city does its own, the county does its own. And then I also want to make mention, um, there had been a talk that we would put in $15,000, in addition to paying half of the expenses for the pool and soccer field, that we would put in $15,000, the county would put in $15,000 for a manager of the pool and soccer field. Uh, President Hutchins had approached me about a week ago and said, "We would rather give 20 and y'all give 20, we think that salary should be more around 40 than 30." And we're agreeable to that, we also, so, just know as a part of this, that person who manages the pool and soccer fields, um, would be set at a salary, I would think, uh, pending all final approvals of about 40K a year. So, just wanting to get all of that out there. Now, it's the pleasure of the board, we do have a motion that has been properly, properly seconded. At this time, we can continue discussion, we can call for question, have a vote, or if the board chooses to, we can table it.
Call the question.
I want to table it. I'm, I'm, and I'm going to say table, because I, I want more discussion.
All right, I've had, I've had to call for the question, but we will honor right now your motion to table just to make sure we are following procedure. Uh, a motion does have precedence over a call for question. A motion has been made by Alderwoman Irving to table this matter. Do we have a second on the motion to table? Okay, last call.
So, the motion dies.
So, the motion to table dies for lack of a second. We are still now in discussion. Uh, I'll entertain more discussion or someone can call for the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Alderman Dillard?
Could you have the attorney or someone restate the, the motion that's on the table currently?
Motion is to approve the fourth interlocal co-op, uh, cooperation agreement as drafted and authorized the mayor to sign if the Board of Supervisors also approves this document that we're going to send to the Board of Supervisors. Because they sent it to us and we cleaned it up, now we're voting on it. It goes to the, to the Board of Supervisors for them to approve also, or they may volley back and say, "We don't like yours, this."
Well, I, I was going to make the comment, it, it seemed like this is the back and forth where we are right now. We, we, they submit something, we make our comments, we resubmit it to them, they make their comments. So, we're not, not there yet, that's one point I, I'd like to make. And the other one is my little sticklerness about words, you know? This is the fourth interlocal cooperation agreement. Now, those all prior to that were either, I believe, were either amendments. So, I'm having a hard time understanding, is this an amendment to an original or is this a new interlocal agreement? Because it, it, it makes the difference. Is that it can be an amendment to an agreement that is in standing or it can be, that would have to be, uh, terminated and it gives language. Uh, and I do question the way this language is for the termination. And then a, a new agreement can be reached. But, for example, on 2.2, the amendment to termination or extension, the amendment may be amended, terminated, or extended by mutual consent in writing. That gets to be one of the things that I think we all respect, is that we can talk and back and forth and all this. But, you know, when you get to the point, when you're in legal, uh, agreements and contracts, they like to put it in writing and if it's important enough, they get them notarized and they get them stamped and they get them approved. I think that's another point that should be understood. Of all the part, of, of the parties and hereafter, set forth in Article 5. Should the term set forth in Section 2.1 expire, then the agreement shall operate month to month. And we should beg the question, Mr. Mayor, if we applied this to the previous one, have we been acting month to month or is it still enforced? The question's never been asked about. We started way back when, when so many months, it was clearly stated by members of this board and I think yourself, that that agreement no longer existed. So, we're still, if not in God, in a legal opinion of whether or not the things exist or it doesn't exist.
You're, you're correct.
And if you lose, if some of this language, and I believe it, this may have been added, Mr. Attorney, is it the blue is what you added or is it the yellow which you highlighted?
I've highlighted yellow on my changes.
And then it goes month to month and then here's a curious words for those who, people who pay attention to these sort of things, until specifically voided by the city or the county. But, it gives you no definition of how you would go about to void it. Would we just quit putting money in the game or do we just not allow anybody to go out there? So, these are legal questions that we've got to have answers on. But, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I really, I'm not prepared and if, if it's forced to the vote, I'll, I'm not sure how I'm going to handle it, but I think there, there, there still needs to be some more conversation.
Well, there was a motion to table, but we did not get a second.
I'll make a motion again. I make a motion that we table it, um-
Let me ask one more question to the attorney.
Once a motion is, uh-
Mr. Mayor, there was a motion to approve Mr. Mr. Callaway's request, motion.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Let me make a, let me just make a statement right now. I don't know if we can entertain your motion again. I don't know that we can.
Well, maybe it's due from another-
Hasn't been, you know, if another member wanted to make that motion, we could. But, I do want to say this, uh, if we wanted to approve this pending approval by the Board of Supervisors and then, and then make a second motion and that would be to void the current agreement, pending the approval of the interlocal agreement by the Board of Supervisors. We could do that. Um, you know, the, the board can do whatever it wants to do today and so now I'm just waiting to hear from you. If there's a motion to be, another motion to be made to table it, I'll entertain that. Uh, call for a question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, after, after, uh, after discussion and everything, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we get clarification on which way the, uh, the Board of Supervisors are going to vote on this.
A second.
Okay, we've had a motion properly seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on this motion to table this? Any discussion on the motion to table?
So, so the comments generated here and recorded here by the attorney will be forwarded on to the Board of Supervisors and then they'll, they'll bring it back and we will have something that we can look at.
That is a motion on the floor.
That is the motion on the floor.
To do that and everything.
The motion is to approve this pending their approval.
That's the motion that I made.
That is the motion currently on the floor. Now, the motion on the floor is whether or not to table that motion. And I'm doing my best, I don't want anyone feeling railroaded, but we do need to move on. Time is of essence and we, uh, are coming up on a 2 o'clock and we, we have to go into executive session at 2:00 PM regardless. Uh, yes, Alderwoman Smith has her hand up?
Um, and, and since we're, if we table it pending, it's not anything until it comes back anyway, right?
Say that again.
If we're tabling it pending on their vote.
It's not, we're not table-
I mean, excuse me, if we approve it-
Approved and you seconded it. That's the first motion that's on the floor.
That's right.
Which one's current?
Right now, the motion is to table. Right now, the motion is to table.
So, what if the other one just went away?
No, it's there, but we have to dispense with the motion to table first.
There was not seconded yet, it was not seconded.
It was seconded, it was by Alderwoman Irving.
Alderwoman Irving made a motion to table, that was not seconded.
Uh, no, Alderman Frazier made a motion to table. And then it was seconded by Alderwoman Irving. And we need to settle this question before we move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Dillard?
One more comment. I have no problem with submitting this to the supervisors to get their response to it. And if that's where we're going, that's where we're going. I don't have a problem with that.
I'd like to move this along.
Because I've got to get a response from them before I can either go forwards or even backwards if you want to look at it, that's silly, so.
I will call the question on the motion to table. Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
So, we're going back and forth. Why is it that we're not having these meetings where we can attend the meetings?
We're having those discussions.
I mean, but why is it that we are not able to attend the meetings? The, uh, the, for discussion concerning this? We've done it in the past and that's my reason for asking. It makes it so confusing because this is the second time I've received this. We had it two weeks ago, we're, and it's still confusing because there's been no discussion on it.
We're having that discussion now, the motion is on the floor to table it. Um, and I, I can only allow you discussion, I'm allowing discussion, but at some point, we've got to move this to a vote. Right now, what do we do about the motion to table? Any further discussion on that?
We have to call for the question.
Have we called for the question, is that a second?
Called.
Okay, we will now have, we're going to have a, a, a roll call vo, vote on the motion to table. All in favor of the motion to table, uh, will actually have a roll call vote. Alderwoman Hall, how do you vote?
Nay.
Alderman Frazier?
Yea.
Alderwoman Smith?
Nay.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Nay.
Alderman Dillard?
Nay.
The, uh, the motion to table dies, four to two. We'll now, uh, entertain further discussion on the motion or call the question on the motion.
Call the question.
Second.
The question has been called on the motion, approval of the interlocal agreement revision, pending the approval of the Board of Supervisors. Uh, we'll again do a roll call vote. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Yea.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Nay.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries, thank you.
One last request and I think based on Alderman Dillard's, um, to just make this above board official, let's, let's have a agreement to void the first one or does that automatically happen? We could just have it-
We've done it by practice, both, all the parties have essentially and we've all said that's where we're headed.
He's, he's worried about future generations looking back on this and where's the, where's the void?
If you want to void it.
It will void it, this is, except, it's in there. I also want to say, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, but it's actually very simple and we've really, all of us have known for about 10 months that we were headed in this direction. It's been a part of all of our discussion of recreation renewal. I don't understand, and I just have to state this, I don't understand why there is a desperate desire to preserve a recreation commission that would have authority over our city parks. I don't understand that at all. This, in my opinion, is a very straightforward proposal and it is simply to do this. We share with the county in the pool and then the soccer fields. It doesn't get simpler than that. And the recreation commission will continue to exist, but only with respect to the pool and the soccer field with six members, not nine. Why would we want the recreation commission to have oversight of our city parks, our $2 million that we're about to spend? That makes no sense to me and I have to ask those questions.
Well, I can get the-
Because I don't think this is a big deal.
You should have been here in 2012 and you may have gotten some answers that you didn't want. Uh, there was a, a very full-throated effort to consolidate all of these resources for the benefit of the community at large and the three parties were about to, and this went all the way through, the Secretary of State and the Attorney General and the legislator and all the things that had been. So, your answer lies back in 2012.
Alderwoman Irving, I'm sorry.
So, where does the school board fit in here? Where's the school district? What role does it play?
The school doesn't run the pool.
No, 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 but again, the, the original interlocal agreement, it consisted of the city, the county, and the school board. And so, that, again, that contract does not expire and the only reason why I'm asking is because, and I, and me, that's the board attorney. And that, that's the reason why the discussion needs to be in person.
Mr. Mayor, we have had a vote and we have discussion.
We're going to move on, I just had to say my base, we're, we do need to move on.
Yeah, I know, we need to move on.
Yes, uh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Smith has her hand up and then Alderman Frazier.
Everybody going to get these?
Alderwoman Smith?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, um, on what Mr. Dillard said there. What we saw since that original agreement and it was, and, and I think that original agreement was a way for the pool to get done. And what we saw and that while we're doing a $2 million bond is that our other parks were, didn't, no, I'm not saying they're, were ignored, I'm just saying there was a lot that didn't get done at our other parks. Some of it was money reasons, some of it was staffing, so, we've got to do what's right for our parks. And the pool is running great and it's been a great interlocal agreement for the pool. It just wasn't great for all of the other parks, including the county. The county's about to do their own bond for their own parks, so, there's, this was the-
Mr. Mayor, the vote has taken place, we need to move on.
We do, but I did promise Alderman Frazier I would recognize him. Alderman Frazier?
Let's just let me say this, I voted, uh, nay, but it wasn't, it wasn't against recreation or what, what the board trying to do. The only thing I would vote, the reason I voted the way I did is because I want, I wanted to know who broke the contract and, and why was the contract broken, that's all. Was we, uh, we going to be legal, uh, did the county break, uh, were we going to be legal in what we doing? Uh, whatever, that's all, I voted nay because the contract itself, who broke the contract?
Thank you, Alderman Frazier. Uh, Mr. Attorney, your next item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start that, please, everyone, if you have a question about something you received from me, we can hopefully solve some of those before we get in this meeting. If you will call me, I will be glad to answer questions before we get here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're about to hopefully close this Dunleith, and I was approached by Mr. Blatner on behalf of Dunleith Partners. The appraisals were conducted, parties agreed, and according to statute, each has to pay one half. The method by which we receive their half, or the appraisers receive their half, was questioned by Mr. Blatner, and Dunleith Partners would like for the city to pay the appraisers, and in this part of the closing, and in the closing statement, their half be paid through closing. The money is the same, it all ends up the same, but instead of them paying the appraiser directly, they will pay the city. So I need, if the board thinks that appropriate, a motion to authorize the city to pay the full price of the appraisals conducted on Dunleith and recoup those, one half of that cost at closing from Dunleith Partners, Dunleith Investors.
And this is the appraisal of Margaret Martin, not Dunleith. Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion has been made by Alderwoman Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Any discussion? We will proceed. Call for the question?
Called. Second.
We'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we've already taken care of most of mine, the Unity Concert, November 13th, another appeal to everyone, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, to get vaccinated. Um, I also want to say that, uh, you've waited patiently, and I know the Angelotti House is a concern to you, and I want to state for the record that we have had, uh, the architects look at the Angelotti House, and we're waiting on estimations on that. And we also have, at the same time, been looking at a number of other city properties, for instance, Napag, the VFW building upstairs here, the City Council Chambers Building and others, and it is our desire to see some progress made. Uh, just as Ms. Bartley said earlier in her report, we've gotta take care of our properties, and I just wanted, you know, to mention that for your benefit, and thank you. And if we do need to discuss privately more about Angelotti House, glad to do that, because it's not actually on the agenda, but you've been here so patiently, and we thank you for that. And the approval of residential-only parking for 717 North Union Street, before we go there, Alderwoman Irving, you had your hand up?
I'll, I'll let you finish.
Okay. Uh, this is a very simple matter. We have a very congested area, a thriving bed and breakfast. It's put a lot of pressure on parking in the area, and there is a resident there having difficulty at times, having a parking place at their home, and it requested a residential-only parking sign for that address. We would like, uh, we've had a meeting, a committee consisting of police, myself, their Alderwoman, and the parties involved. We'd like approval to establish this for 717 North Union Street.
Still moved.
Have a motion by Alderwoman Hall. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I'm, but what...
Alderwoman Irving is seconded.
Exactly what location?
It, it is across from the burn, and it's in the facility of Aunt Clara's Cottage and the homes that are on the end of that street on the 700 block of North Union Street.
Okay.
And there, uh, if you recall, this is a, a bed and breakfast that was approved years ago. It's, uh, it, it's been a bed and breakfast for many years, um, but there, there has been, you know, some concerns about parking. So we're bringing that.
I'm familiar with that area.
What was the motion?
The motion was to establish a residential-only parking district for 717 North Union Street.
Oh, oh.
Yes, Alderman Davis?
Oh, residential parking. If we approve a residential parking for that address, that mean we have to do it for the rest of the city.
That is correct. I mean, that is correct.
But it's a tight park up there. It really is. It's a really tight park up there.
Just imagine, uh, the business owners, they probably, uh, come in, they have their own parking too. And then it gonna be hard for the police to, it gonna be difficult for the police writing tickets in that area on something like that. Also, just say, for instance, uh, they come up, uh, come get situated, like they want them to move cars, police, you talk about getting the tow, tow the vehicle, who, who gonna be responsible for towing the vehicle? And then also, uh, is the rest of it, is there one spot?
It's one area there. I believe it may be two, two spots.
But they're gonna, uh, for, for the rest of the city, they're gonna be, a lot of people in the city gonna want the same thing.
We've had that in the past, and you're right about that with different bed and breakfasts in the area, but that is a tight, um, area.
Alderman Fraser has his hand up?
Mr. Mayor, uh...
Yes, Alderman Fraser?
Uh, Alderman Davis is, is a, is a former police officer. He know exactly what he's talking about. We are opening up a can of worms if you start doing it. If everyone that wanted, anybody who have a resident, if I don't want you parking in front of my house, can I get a sign, put it in front of my house, keep people from parking? So what you gonna do? If the board sit you in and vote for that, you may as well get ready for a flood of, of people requesting to put signs in front of their house. I, I was in Dallas, Texas last, about a month, a month ago, and we was at a B and B. We didn't have any way to park. We had to go through the back alley, because we couldn't go out there telling people to move their cars. But if you do that, if we do that, every citizen in the nation's gonna want one.
Thank you, Alderman Fraser. Uh, Alderwoman Smith?
And I'm not sure that it's legal on a public street to put residential parking on there. I don't know that we, we could do that anyway, um...
Do you wanna move the table? I'm going to, I'm going to ask Alderwoman Hall, you know, I brought this up because we've been asked to bring it to the board for discussion. That's what we've done. It, it sounds like further discussion is warranted. I'm gonna ask Alderwoman Hall to withdraw her motion to allow for further, further discussion. All right, that will allow us to look into your questions further. I think you raised very good questions, and we'll look into those. Uh, all right, with that said, we have one more item, and this is a, a matter that we will make a statement on, and then we're going to have to go into executive session. But if you'll recall, the board did take action, uh, in its prior meeting, uh, a week ago, Friday, in, uh, in accepting, well, making and approving, approving and making an offer to an individual to be the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city. Uh, that offer was made, however, due to some, uh, circumstances of a personal nature, the individual regretfully had to decline the position. Uh, that resulted then in the position remaining vacant. Uh, there had been three finalists for that position that the board had interviewed. Uh, there are now two finalists. Uh, the board is going to conduct another series of interviews, and the board can do whatever the board desires to do. Uh, so that interview process is about to take place, so we're going to need to call for a motion to go into executive session for the matter of interviewing and discussing, uh, the Director of Parks Recreation position. We also have two matters of personnel, uh, issues that are pending from our previous executive session. One involved an employee in the, uh, City Clerk's Office, and one involved an employee that may have not been properly, uh, uh, treated in payment of insurance and with withheld amounts for insurance deductible. So with that said, that is an open determination. I think we've given as much information as we need to give. I will call for a motion to go into executive session for the reasons I have just described.
Still moved.
A motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Hall. Discussion on the motion. We will, uh, ask for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? We now stand, uh, have recessed this meeting, and we will now go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna say that we have a school board member that...
Okay, good. Goodly. All right. We are back. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session, and then I will make a report.
Still moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Hall.
Alderman Davis?
Alderman Davis made the motion. Alderwoman Hall seconds it. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Any opposed to the motion? Hearing none, motion passes. We are adjourned, and this is our report. We interviewed two candidates for the position of Parks and Recreation Director. No action was taken. We discussed a matter pertaining to an insurance discrepancy for an employee. Uh, no action was taken. However, we are about to entertain a motion for that. And then, number three, we discussed a matter involving a personnel situation in the City Clerk's Office. No action was taken. Mr. Callaway, we do need a motion for the item involving insurance and a certain employee. Can you frame that motion for us?
Believe I can, Mr. Mayor. Please, Alderman, Alderwomen, uh, in order to resolve this disputed claim, it is my recommendation that a motion be posed that we pay employee 302229 the sum of $565.25 to resolve his claims that he was overcharged slash underpaid by the city.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question.
Called.
We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Is there another motion? Any other business? Uh, Alderwoman Hall, I think you said you had a motion?
Yes, sir. I would move that we hire Ms. Nora Cole as our new full-time recreation director.
Okay, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Discussion on the motion. Call for the question?
Called.
Second?
Second.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. The count, I believe, is four to two. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
If you ask if there's any doubt among the board members whether that was a four-two vote, whether we need a roll call.
Do we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We do. We will proceed with a roll call vote. Alderwoman Hall?
Aye.
Alderman Fraser?
Nay.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Nay.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Diller?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. We want to congratulate Ms. Cole. We will extend the offer to her and let you know what her reply is. Uh, Ms. Cole has extensive experience over a course of many years, uh, as an athlete, someone who has been in education, someone who has been a coach, someone who attended Grambling State on a basketball scholarship, and also a volleyball scholarship, and someone who has worked in one of the largest parks and recreation programs in the state of Louisiana, and brings vast experience. Uh, so, uh, we will look forward to moving, uh, forward in that area. We have accomplished a lot today. I want to say it's been a pleasure being here with all of you today. Um, do we have another matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I moved that, I moved that we approved the July 2021 employment report, or we know it's a hire file report.
All right, do I have a motion? Uh, have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made by Alderwoman Hall, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? We'll call for the question.
Called.
We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Motion carries. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, we will now ask are any opposed to the motion? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much.
Look at him go.
Thank you for your patience, and have a great, enjoy lunch.
Seven hours.
Seven hours.
Yes, sir.